Okay, did you get me some letters to read too, or were these just here?
Oh, just given.
Okay. Everybody all set? Quiet, please. Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Town of South Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Tuesday, November 9th, 2021. Our first item is Pledge of Allegiance. If all could rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before starting, I just want to thank Commissioner Frank Bonzani, who was not re-elected to planning and zoning. Frank had 11 years of service to the commission, and just want to let him know that the town appreciates his efforts and enjoys his Tuesday nights. Could we have the reading of the notice, please?
You may. Notice is hereby given that there will be a public hearing on Tuesday, November 9th, 2021, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the South Windsor Town Hall to consider the following. Number one, Application 21-50P, Daniel Arcapio, request for a special exception to Table 4.1.1A and site plan approval for an indoor recreational facility, approximately 8,700 square feet, to be known as Dreams Baseball and Softball Training Facility. This is on property located at 185 Commerce Way, Industrial Zone. Application number two is 21-36P, 25 Talbot Lane Site Plan. This is a request by UW Vintage Lane 2, LLC, for site plan approval for a 359,640 square foot distribution facility on 30.37 acres of property, on property located at 5,25 Talbot Lane, 475 and 551 Governor's Highway Industrial Zone. This has been continued from October 12th and October 26th. To view this meeting, please tune into Channel 16 if your provider is Cox Cable, or go to Copies of this application are on file in the office of the town clerk and/or the planning department and online at www.south windsor CT.gov/Planning-Department-Pages/Planning and Zoning Commission-Applications. At this hearing, interested persons may be heard, and written comments by the public will be received by mail and email. Persons who may require an accommodation can contact staff Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 4:30, at 860-644-2511, extension 329. Bart Pasakonis, Chairman, Planning and Zoning.
Thank you very much. A little housekeeping. Commissioner Dexter is going to be our interim secretary for the evening. Commissioner Wagner is going to be our vice chair, and Commissioner Foley is absent tonight, so Commissioner Bernstein will sit for Commissioner Foley. First off, if anyone has a cellphone, I hear one dinging every now and then, I'm not sure where it is, but please put them on vibrate. Our order of business tonight will be first to hear from the applicant, then we'll hear an update possibly from town staff, and then we will hear from the intervenors, and then we will hear from members of the public. We will have letters to be read into the record, and hopefully we are going to get to commissioners' questions, because I do know that the commissioners have a lot of questions for this application. So at this time, we'll turn to our town staff. Do you have an update, or?
Are we going to start with the first application, the Dreams Sports Academy? Have them come up for a brief presentation.
My apologies, wanted to get right in. Okay, our first application tonight is Application 21-50P, Daniel Arcapio, request for a special exception to Table 4.1.1A. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
If you could, make sure your microphone is on, and please speak into it. You may move it around on the table. There's a button right there. You got it. That red light signifies it's on.
Oh, red light. I got it.
Red Light District. And if you could put it in front of you or speak into it, we would appreciate it. Thank you very much.
No problem. Thank you for having us. I don't want to take much of your time. We're actually going to an existing building on 185 Commerce Way, and all we're going to do is, we're going to turf the building, put netting in there, nothing more than throwing some paint on the wall and being able to open up a facility where our community, our kids in town can go train and do their baseball work, do their one-on-one trainings, team training, small groups. Being a resident in town since '04, this is something I always wanted to do in this town, only for the simple fact that I'm a big baseball guy. People in town know me as Mr. Rodriguez, Coach Rodriguez, and this opportunity came up, and I said, you know what, I'm going to do it. And we were lucky enough to find this property on 185, and then everything in there meets what we're looking for, and because it's such an easy build-out, I figured, yes, I'm going to move forward with it.
Okay, is that complete your presentation?
That's it.
Okay.
Show and sweet.
Okay. Thank you very much.
That's it.
Yep, well, for right now. At this time, we'll turn to our Director of Planning, Michelle Leip.
Thank you. This is a request for a special exception to Table 4.1A, the zoning regulations to allow indoor sports training, including personal training and small group training in existing building at 185 Commerce Way in the industrial zone. The use would occupy about 5,000 square feet of vacant area, and there's about a 1,400 square foot office area adjacent to it. There is other space that will not be associated with this particular use. There are no exterior improvements proposed. There are some minor interior changes proposed to the space. The applicant has provided you with a narrative indicating they hope to open Monday through Friday from 4:00 to 10:00 PM, and from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM on the weekends. They indicate that the number of athletes would be around 10 to 13 at any given time with some few coaches. There will always be an adult present on-site if the facility is open. Our parking requirements for indoor recreational uses are one space for 250 square feet of gross floor area. Currently, the spaces in this building are office and manufacturing. With the inclusion of the recreation, it does require 31 spaces. Currently, there are 21 spaces available. This is a situation where the history of the property is it used to be two buildings on one lot. They did subdivide the property, so there is shared parking between both properties. This is somewhat of a nighttime use. They have provided a letter from the adjacent property owner giving permission for off-hour use of that parking, so they are requesting to have a waiver of the 10 spaces. And again, there currently is a cross-travel easement in place on the property. The applicant will need to work with the building official and the fire marshal for the change of use of the property and take any necessary permits for that change of use. The site is currently serviced by public water and sewer. Water pollution control approval will not be required as it's currently hooked up to sewers. If this application is approved, the planning department has no modifications to request. Just for some of the board's identification, when we do have an indoor recreation use in an industrial building, the idea is that it could be converted readily back into industrial space when and if the time came. I think with the minimal improvements being proposed with this application, it's very easy to see it converted back into existing industrial space when the time may come. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we'll turn to our town engineer, Jeff Doolittle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no additional comments on this application.
Okay. At this time, I will turn to members of the public. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this application? Please step forward. Is there anyone who would like to speak against this application or have questions or concerns? Please step forward. Hearing and seeing none, I'll turn to Commissioner Bernstein.
Mr. Arcapio, am I pronouncing that right?
No, I'm actually his partner, Junior Rodriguez.
Okay.
Yeah, he doesn't like to speak, so...
He doesn't like public speaking?
He told me I got to come up here.
I think if I heard Michelle write, "There's no changes to the interior or exterior," is that accurate?
That is correct.
What is this building currently being used for?
It's empty right now. It's vacant.
So you'll be adding equipment, putting in...
Correct. I'm just going to put...
Hitting blocks, pitching blocks, things like that?
Yeah, yeah. Yes, I'm just going to throw down turf. I throw down netting, a shell netting, L-screens to protect yourself and all those good things, but nothing more than that. It's just turf, netting, batting cages, and baseballs and cheese.
I'll just remind the applicant to speak into the microphone.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Thank you.
Is the usage of it available to teams, or people sign up, or how does that work?
Yes, absolutely. It's going to be available to, actually, I'm glad you said that, because it will be available to the residents of South Windsor. It'll be available to the Little Leagues, to the Legion with Mr. Zimmerman, Coach Maximino. I mean, I'm willing to even go to the seniors, right? So they have a place to go where they can go put their steps in and play bocce, I don't know. You know, I mean, somewhere where they can get some other form of exercise, especially in the winter months, right? Because it's cold, and it's really not much of an area where the group can come in and say, you know, I'm just going to go in there for a half hour, 45 minutes, and get some work in.
Okay. So a couple of the things that just off the top of my head hit me about this. Are there any changes to the lighting?
No, there's existing lighting there.
Existing lighting. So what, again, refresh, what are the hours of usage of the facility?
Monday to Friday is going to be after-hours, starting at 4:30 to about 10:00, the latest. The weekends will be mornings, let's say, 9:30 to about 5:36, the latest.
And as far as we know, the existing lighting is sufficient for nighttime use?
Yes.
And security?
Yes.
Is there anything specific, motion detectors, anything of that?
Yeah, everything is set up. I actually have the landlord here, so I think she can probably answer those questions, but yes, there, all that, there's motion detectors, there's all the exit lighting, there's all the strobe lights. I'm not really familiar with all that, but all that stuff is there. And there's interior, exterior cameras.
The only other thing that occurs to me, having had a son that's played baseball in this town, and this is probably a little bit of outside or area of responsibility, but liability insurance, if there's nothing happening in this building now, there's going to be kids in there, there's going to be balls getting pitched at high speeds, we have all the insurances?
Yes, I'm covered with all the insurances. Also, there would never be anyone in there without being supervised, for example. If a child wants to come in, myself or a staff will be there, their coach will be there. There's things that are in place where, I don't know if you know, but, you know, if you had a son that played baseball, a child or a kid, an athlete cannot front toss or pitch to them. I mean, that's against all rules. It has to be an adult, has to be a coach or a trainer that can actually do that form of activity. So in other words, you can't have a 12-year-old throwing front toss to another 12-year-old, because that's forbidden across the board in all towns. I don't know if you're aware of that, but yeah.
Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, before we go to you, Mike, I'm just going to take a minute, two things. We have a letter to read into the record, and I was neglecting our two new commissioners. Alan Cavignaro was an alternate and was recently elected to full commissioner on the planning and zoning, and Robert Vettieri, who was also successful at being elected. Welcome. Okay, so I'll ask the secretary to read this letter into the record.
You don't want to continue. The only letter we received was from Lucasic, LLC, and they're just letting the commission know that as the owners of 179 Commerce Way, we will allow for overflow parking to be utilized by Dreams Sports Academy.
Okay, thank you very much. And now we'll turn to Commissioner LeBlanc.
Thank you. I don't have any questions. I'm familiar with this type of operation, and I think it's great use for existing property, and I wish you the best of luck. This is a good use of the building. Hey, this one's easy.
Thank you. Any kids play? I mean, no? No kids, grandkids? Play baseball? No?
I don't play now, but years ago.
Years ago?
Okay, Commissioner Wagner?
It sounds like a lot of fun. I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Dexter?
No questions.
Commissioner Vettieri?
No, the only comment I had was that it would be supervised all the time, and you said that it will be, so it won't be just people running around, so, no, I'm perfectly content.
And Commissioner Cavignaro?
Yeah, I just want to say I've played baseball in this town for eight years through the Little League system. I'm really happy that we have something expanding that. I remember back when I played, back in the early 2010s, no, it felt like yesterday, that I'm really thankful that we do have more expanding small businesses like this to really provide opportunities for kids to not only enjoy, you know, baseball through the town, so I'm really appreciative of that. But yeah, I have no further questions on that front, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and I just had a question. Typically, you're going to be hitting balls and stuff inside the building.
Yes.
You've got sprinkler heads and light bulbs, probably fluorescent lights up there. Have you thought about protecting them?
Yeah, so what, the way we have it planned out is called a shell netting. The shell netting is actually going to go across the exterior, the top, and all four walls, because you have to protect the lighting, everything else is above that. And we're going to have maybe six to eight feet from anything touching, and underneath that, we're also going to have a netting that's going to also protect all the exteriors and the shell on the top.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Okay. No further questions. Commissioners, is there any reason to keep the public hearing open? Hearing and seeing none, staff? None? Then we will close the public hearing at 7:17, and hopefully address this later tonight. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Okay. Our next public hearing application is Application 21-36P, 25 Talbot Lane Site Plan. Commissioner, yeah, Commissioner. Mr. DiMali, good evening.
Chairman Pasakonis. For your record, again, Peter DiMali, President of Design Professionals, offices here at 21 Jeffrey Drive. I'd like to thank, just as you did, I'd like to thank outgoing Commissioners Bonzani and Flag, as you recognized last meeting, for their volunteer service to towns and residents, and also congratulate the four commissioners who were elected last Tuesday and sworn in last night in this very room, as I saw it on TV, Commissioners Wagner, Cavignaro, LeBlanc, and Vettieri, and to thank Commissioners Pasakonis, Foley, and Dexter, as well as alternate Commissioners Bernstein and Powell, for their ongoing service. You guys don't get recognized all that much, but thank you very much. I know, I'm appreciative, and I know what hours you put into it. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, UW Vintage Lane 2, LLC, requesting site plan approval for a 360,000 square foot distribution center in industrial zone at 25 Talbot Lane. That's four consolidated lots on just over 30 acres. My client has already acquired the subject property for the intended distribution center use, which is permitted by right in the zoning regulations, requiring site plan approval and a waiver. We've requested for lighting pole height on the west side of the building only, in the truck court area. This is a $35 million development, which is expected to increase the town's annual real property taxes on the property from today's $16,000 to over $700,000, just real property alone. That's a 43-fold increase in taxes, as well as other economic benefits that have been outlined in Mr. Poland's report that you have seen previously, and there are other economic benefits. Our consulting team for tonight's third hearing includes Benjamin Wheeler, to my right, DPI's Director of Operations, covering the site's design, landscape architecture, and exterior lighting systems; Daniel Jamison, who was unable to be with us last time, but he's here in the second row, our project manager, who's here for civil engineering components including storm drainage, water quality grading, erosion control measures; Maximo Palenco, I think this is the first time he's been with you, for this application of Langin Engineering for traffic engineering issues; Emily Perko and Matt Glenn of GEI in the second row as well. They are here, Emily with respect to wildlife and storm drainage, pardon me, Emily with respect to wildlife and natural resource issues, and Matt with respect to storm drainage; and also Dr. Donald Polans in the front row of Goman and York for municipal fiscal and economic impacts and benefits; and then also Attorney Jim Connor of Updike, Kelly &amp; Spelcy of Hartford for legal direction, again, in the second row, who will be delivering some remarks during our overall presentation, also some concluding remarks. And our entire team, design team members who are here, are available this evening to respond to any questions as appropriate through the chair. I'm hopeful that all the new commissioners and those not at the two prior hearings have had the opportunity to review the record in its entirety, and thus I will keep to a minimum review of prior testimony. We're trying to deliver new testimony, but we'll give some highlights from the past, first two hearings, that is. Prior to submission of this site plan application, our clients and the design team went to great lengths to reduce impacts beyond the minimum zoning dimensional requirements, out of respect and consideration for the neighbors. We had no interest in placing a large 40-feet-high building or its loading docks some 60 feet from the residential zone, as allowed by right, which of course represents a 50-foot buffer and 10-foot side yard. Our second engineered site plan developed in consideration of a recommendation from the Director of Planning, Michelle Leip, and presented at the second hearing moved all loading docks and trailer parking to the westerly side of the building, and thus facing the industrial properties on Talbot Lane rather than facing area residences. This made for a better project, we like her idea, and fewer impacts. As it now stands, the current building location is three and a half times the allowed distance to the nearest residential property line on Edgewood Drive, that's roughly 214 feet, and well over six times the allowed distance to the nearest residential... And well over six times the allowed distance to the nearest residential property line on Cody Circle. It's about three hundred and eighty-five feet, as we presented last time. The closest loading dock to a residence on Edgewood Drive is three hundred and sixty feet, to Governor's Highway is five hundred and eighty feet, and to Cody Circle is nine hundred feet, which is a measurement through the distribution center building. It'd be longer if you went around the building. There are no onsite tractor-trailer truck movements or activities easterly of the northwest and southwest corners of the building, meaning over seventy percent of our site, that's over twenty-one acres of the site, of the thirty-acre site, has no tractor-trailer movements at all. That's over twenty-one point three acres of the, as I mentioned, thirty-acre site, restricted because we have gates preventing such on the circumferential security drive we have on the drive going all the way around the building. In the northerly part and the southerly part, we have gate, it's gated on that point to preclude tractor-trailer vehicles from going to the easterly part of the site. They're restricted to roughly eight or so acres. And the twenty-one point three acres that's devoid of truck traffic includes the building, landscaping, employee parking lots and entrance drive, the two-acre pond and buffer areas. Indeed, the closest residentially-zoned property to the south end of our truck court is the town's two-point-seven-two-acre parcel. It's open space, it's largely wooded, at the northwest corner of the Edgewood Drive neighborhood. So that's, and that is really our closest residentially-zoned neighbor there, to the, to the truck court. And to screen this allowed industrial development from the residential neighbors, we've developed, we believe, a robust plan. Along the easterly and southerly property lines, we're leaving the woods alone to the required fifty-feet buffer width, which is behind the ten butters backyards. If the commission, in your discretion, this is new, in your discretion, would like us to enhance the first fifty feet of the buffer along our east and south property lines by interplanting with evergreen trees and shrubs, in addition to our other landscape architectural elements, we will agree to do that. That's, that's an additional component. That alone would meet your buffer requirements, just within the fifty feet. But beyond that, we are adding another forty to forty-five feet wide earthen berm at great expense, upon which we are planting scores of evergreen trees, which will get very large and deliver a very effective natural screening effect in and of itself, at five years out and at plant maturity, which is your standard. The total berm length along the east and southerly property lines is over twenty-one hundred lineal feet. In addition to that, we're building another eight hundred and sixty feet long earthen berm, along with scores of trees and shrubs along Governor's Highway. The industrial zone does not require any buffer along our street frontage. None. We are therefore building a total of around three thousand lineal feet of earthen berm, that's forty to forty-five feet in width. And this is on a site where we expect to have to import soil to build the facility. So this is, we have to import more material just to make this happen, the berm, that is. On day one, the six-foot-high earthen berm, which is even higher than I am, I used to be six feet tall, now I'm shrinking a little bit, with its plant materials, will screen the employee parking lot and its vehicles as depicted on our plans and portrayed in our previously shown cross-sections. Ben Wheeler, to my right again, is here, our Director of Operations, should you want greater specificity on our design. Between the building and residential boundaries that's on the east and southerly sides, we are providing a two-acre water quality basin, a pond in an area without ponds, that our experts in the inland wetlands agency acknowledged will become an aquatic resource for wildlife. These natural areas, in conjunction with our high-quality wetlands, that's existing wetlands, and high-quality created wetlands, will be of greater value to wildlife than what preceded it and will function as a wildlife corridor, unless we restrict the movement of wildlife, that's turtles, deer, coyotes, raccoons and the like, that the neighbors want to protect, and we do as well. We're only proposing a fence around our fifty-four loading docks and one hundred and eleven trailer parking spaces, the truck court, if you will. Incidentally, so we want to have free movement of the wildlife, as everyone has indicated they'd like to see. Incidentally, the wetlands, inland wetlands agency agreed with our experts that we're creating a better habitat, and the DEEP has approved our plan for addressing threatened endangered species on the site. Some areas are being left untouched for this purpose. The single tighter beagle, beetle that was, has already been translocated, it's already been translocated to an in-town site approved by the DEEP, so it's already off the site. And Emily Perko, again in the second row from GEI, is here, should you want to ask her about wildlife, any other issues associated with that, Mr. Chairman. As stated previously, we are conforming to the commission's new EV charging stations regulations, providing ten activated and twenty-four wired-in-reserve spaces for that purpose. It's the future. Perhaps the issue of greatest concern to date is centered on truck traffic, both existing and future. We can only control that which is generated by our tenant. During the course of our application, we have also discovered that the town ordinance restricting trucks through the easterly part of Governor's Highway is essentially unenforceable. It's a matter of fact that the road classified as a major collector, which was recently resurfaced westerly of Talbot Lane, not quite all the way, but almost to it, connects US Route Five, a major north-south artery in the metropolitan area, an alternate to I-91, with a state highway, Ellington Road Route Thirty. It also serves as an important route for emergency vehicles to get to Route Five, Main Street, our community's north-south industrial corridor in adjoining areas. For example, from the fire headquarters on Ellington Road and the ambulances often stand by, on standby in the center of whopping the center of our town, police too. So it cannot be closed, and for that matter, Talbot Lane cannot be physically altered to prevent fire apparatus from turning right when exiting. In fact, the street does serve other industrial enterprises, manufacturing and otherwise. A total daily volume on Governor's Highway is fifty-two hundred one-way trips. For the record, our tractor-trailer trucks will be directed to serve the site only to and from Route Five via Talbot Lane, and not via the residential section of Governor's Highway and Ellington Road. Based on IT projections, they will be able to dock and queue entirely within our site, that's our expectation. We are thus amenable to a condition that there will be no parking, queuing, standing signage installed along Talbot Lane, to be worked out with the town's traffic authority. So we're amenable to that prohibiting on Talbot Lane, truck queuing, standing, parking on, at the location. We can accommodate all them on our site. During the morning peak hour, sixteen trucks will enter the site and sixteen will exit the site. During the afternoon peak hour, some fifteen trucks will enter the site and only seven will exit the site. On a daily basis, a total of one hundred and five trucks will enter the site and one hundred and four exit the site. That's on a daily basis. And the State of Connecticut, Office of State Traffic Administration, has already approved the traffic study and its findings, and agrees with our traffic engineers at Langin, Maximo is here tonight, that the existing roadway infrastructure is adequate to support the nominal increase in traffic volume generated by the proposed distribution center without improvements. Regrettably, our design team has observed trucks going both directions through the residential section of Governor's Highway. So Maximo Palenco, Registered Professional Engineer, our traffic engineer from Langin, one of our two, is here tonight to answer any questions you may have, including with respect to supplemental report. And he's also going to elaborate a little on trip generation, peak hours, buses and accidents, as per inquiries last time. So, Mr. Palenco, please come forward. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thanks, Peter, for the introduction. So I would like to start by stating, like Peter mentioned, that the Office of State Traffic Administration from Connecticut has reviewed our traffic study and agrees, agrees with our assessment that the existing infrastructure is adequate to manage the expected nominal increase in traffic by the proposed development. I would like to basically clarify some couple points that were raised on the last hearing on October twenty-six. First, to talk about trip generation, like Peter mentioned, on a daily basis, this site is expected to generate a hundred and five trucks entering, on a daily basis, entering the site, and a hundred and four trucks exiting the site, for a total of two hundred and nine. During the morning peak hour, this is between seven and nine AM, we're expecting to have sixteen trucks entering and sixteen trucks exiting. And during the afternoon peak hour, this is between four and six, we will have fifteen trucks entering the site and seven trucks exiting the site. Now regarding daily distribution, we expect, and this is all based on the IT trip generation manual, we expect that eighty-five percent of all the traffic by the proposed development will, will access the site from six AM and seven PM. So this is eighty-five percent of all the traffic will access the site from six AM to seven PM. Then, for the rest of the traffic, that fifteen percent will be scattered throughout the rest of the day. And that is regarding the daily distribution for the site. We reviewed the bus routes, from, concerns from the last hearing, we reviewed the bus routes that are serving the community of South Windsor, and we can determine that for during drop-off and pickup, there are five routes that use Governor's Highway. Five route, five routes that are with kids, buses with kids, that use Governor highways to go pick up and drop off the kids at their specific stop locations. But only one of these routes travels all the way from Route Thirty to Governor's Highway. All the other basically travel east of our site. They don't go through the site. Yes, the bus, the buses use Governor's Highway to go through and from the school to, from their location site of where all the buses are. But with kids, only one bus goes through, through our site, passes through our site. So, that is regarding the, the bus routes at the school. As well, we know that there's a concern that regarding traffic, but all these buses, Governor's Highway on a daily basis, averaged fifty hu-, fifty-two hundred vehicles a day. This is on an average basis, on a, on a day, Governor's Highway. And we, we don't expect that the increase of traffic due to our development and due to the buses along Governor's Highway will impact or change our analysis. Lastly, we want to clarify the crash data on our report. Due to an input formatting on the crash data repository from UConn, the way that you input and you request the data, depending on which intersection or which location you input first, in, in our case, mainly our concern is Governor's Highway. We inputted Governor's Highway first and then Route Five, and that gives you one accident along Governor's Highway. If you do it the other way around, which is Route Five first and then Governor Highway, Governor's Highway, it'll give you a total of eight accidents. And again, this is just a formatting into the system. But even reviewing that, all the, that data, we can confirm that from the nine accidents that occurred during twenty eighteen, January twenty eighteen and December twenty twenty, only one of these accidents was coming from Governor's Highway. All the others were mainly traveling along Route Five. And there's no specific pattern to identify any safety concern at the intersection. If you look at it, and on a yearly basis, we're talking about on average, three accidents per year, which is something normal for a highway that has on average, Route Five, twenty thousand vehicles a day. So three accidents per year, it's, it's considered a normal for such a heavily traveled highway. So with that said, I think that will be the end of my presentation. Thank you.
Bear with a moment for a little IT action. Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. By the way, he chaired an IT department in Cleveland or Columbus? Columbus, Columbus, previously, in a prior life. Okay, so going on with our presentation, DPI's Project Manager, Daniel Jamison, who's Licensed Professional Engineer in Connecticut, has advanced degree in stormwater drainage design and civil engineering, is available to address any questions on our engineered site plan. As previously stated, our system has capacity to handle our storm, storm events, including increasingly intensive events, as we have seen of late, and addresses water quality. So he's available should you have questions for him. As to whether or not our site soils have any residual contaminants, contaminants from prior agricultural activities that was raised at the last hearing, we are assuming the answer is in the affirmative, as GEI, our consultants here, has found on other sites in South Windsor with a history of farming. They typically include pesticides and herbicides. As such, no soil will be transported off the site. We expect the soils in industrial and residential areas around the subject site are also contaminated that had prior agricultural operations. We're also employing best management practices for dust and erosion control. Emily Perko and Matt Glenn from GEI, who handle those types of activities, and Daniel Jamison from DPI are here if you'd have any questions in regard to this. Our survey crews have been out to the property and located all the trees at least eighteen inches in caliper. There are many of them. It took about three days to complete this task. They're depicted on a survey map, which has been submitted, and we're submitting some documents as well, right now. Your Architecture Review and Design Committee has reported favorably on our current design, that's the building, landscape architecture and site lighting elements. We are proposing a distribution center use only, permitted by right with a site plan application, and not a truck terminal or other use requiring a special exception, and which would be more offensive to the neighbors. We agree with that. We have no intention of applying for those uses. Of course, they would require approval from the, the commission, which is not on the plate. Examples of distribution centers in South Windsor, which have been approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, we're gonna have a, yep, hold on. We're gonna have an exhibit here? In fact, they have these, correct? Oh, now they will. We're passing out some exhibits, smaller versions, I think eleven by seventeen of this, as we go forward. So examples of approved distribution centers in South Windsor, approved by Planning, Zoning Commission and other boards and commissions, which are many, include Aldi's New England Regional Headquarters and Distribution Center in the industrial zone on Ryce Street. Building which is, can we, are we gonna go to that? Yep. Okay, here we go. We were involved with that design, a building is, which is twice the size of our building, and it has loading docks on two sides of the building. Basically, on the right side was the east side, I consider it, and the south side, which is the lower side. Second one we want to show you, exhibit four, is Hyundai's Mobus Parts Distribution Center in the industrial zone. Again, the industrial zone, serving the northeast on Sullivan Avenue, northeast United States, that is, on Sullivan Avenue, with loading docks on one side, which is the right side, or I'd call it the easterly side of the building. We also designed that facility and next to that, done at the same time, Vistar's, which is part of, part of Performance Food Group, Vistar's Distribution Center in the industrial zone, also on Sullivan Avenue with loading docks on one side. So those two loading docks face one another, Hyundai and the Vistar buildings. Fourth one I wanted to mention, call to your attention, is the new Coca-Cola Distribution Sales Center in the corridor development zone, that's the I-291 corridor development zone, on Ellington Road Route Thirty, with loading docks on one side and truck drive-through the building feature. You can go right through the building. The, the Macy's Warehouse on Governor's Highway, which is also in the industrial zone, is a much larger building than the subject site, subject of our application, has loading docks on the east and south sides, as you can see in the exhibit presenting to you, and you have a printout for those commissioners who can't see the exhibit behind you. And the sixth one we want to present to you is the Amazon Distribution Center on Ellington Road, with loading docks on one side. We don't have visual on that, sorry about that. All of these distribution, that's because there's no aerial available at this time. All of these distribution centers warehouses have some common elements, such as forty feet in height, affording large-volume interior storage areas in a large rectangular building, largely rectangular, with loading docks and trailer parking, employee parking generally approved by right. Although, in the corridor development zone, you added a provision in recent history where if there's any outdoor storage areas, they require a special exception. But the overall use of distribution center warehouse is permitted by right. The corridor development zone also requires buildings of a higher architectural standard than in the instance zone that we're applying for tonight, the industrial zone. On the other hand, trucking terminals are allowed in the industrial zone only by special exception, against fourteen review criteria, unlike distribution centers and warehouses in the industrial zone. They are routinely characterized by having smaller and very narrow buildings, often with loading docks on each side, with limited storage capacities and- with loading docks on each side, with limited storage capacities, and often the buildings are lower profile and the tenant is a common carrier. Examples in South Windsor are the R and L Truck Terminal on Sullivan Avenue, shown right there in the middle of the picture. Uh, the Old Dominion Terminal on Strong Road near residential, it's westerly of Route five. Uh, and also the, oh, there we go, and then also the DATCO Terminal on Strong Road in Nutmeg Road North. Uh, the South Windsor Town Assessor's Office identifies all these truck terminal facilities as truck terminals. Uh, these are on your handout. Attorney Connor would now like to address you on this matter as well. And we're going to go to the spreadsheet. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, uh, for the record, my name is James Connor, and I'm an attorney with Updike, Kelly and Spellicy, PC, one hundred Pearl Street, Hartford, Connecticut. I represent the applicant, UW Vintage Lane Two LLC. Uh, first, I want to, uh, emphasize that this is an application for a warehouse and distribution center. And I know last week, uh, the issue was introduced of, over whether this was, uh, you know, in fact, some sort of a stealth truck terminal, and therefore needed to, uh, go through the special exception process. Now, this is a straw man ar- uh, argument that was, you know, put forward by, uh, the attorney for, uh, some of the project's, um, opponents. And I think it goes without saying that an applicant has a right to apply for the use they want to apply for, and not to have to apply for a use that somebody who's opposed to the project thinks they should call it instead. The idea that we would have to have an application processed to take into account every conceivable other use that could possibly fit into the physical structure is absurd. I mean, it, it would be almost as if the commission were in the habit of requiring, uh, before you could build a, uh, a, a single-family home, that you had to submit applications for every conceivable home occupation under, under section seven point eleven of the regulations. You know, obviously, under the process that's contained in the regulations, you know, that the commission maintains control if there's a change in use. Uh, the applicant can't decide to build something else and then go to the zoning enforcement officer and the building official to get a zoning permit and a building permit if it comes in with a plan that shows something akin to what you, uh, just saw on the screen for one of the, the, the truck terminals, uh, in town that, that handles, um, you know, freight on a very, you know, short term through the terminal basis as opposed to acting as a distribution center. Um, you know, under section nine point one point one, the zoning enforcement officer can require an applicant for zoning permit to provide whatever information is needed to show that the, uh, that the plans that are being submitted are for a use that's permitted, so that at the time we get to that construction level plans, we would have to show that it is in fact a warehouse and distribution center. And the same thing goes for the other end of the construction process. Um, if there was some sort of a change, uh, you know, midstream that again converted this to, uh, to a truck terminal, the, uh, the, the CEO could deny, uh, certificate of zoning compliance, uh, when, when the structure's complete. One of the things that, you know, we wanted to show in this tabular format on these, on these spreadsheets, uh, is something that I think was, uh, actually shown very well in some of the pictures, the, the aerial photos that Mr. DiMali put up, uh, showing the physical configurations of the two types of uses. Uh, and one, you know, key metric, uh, that my, my client calculated in going through what's available in the assessor's database, uh, is the number of square feet in the building per loading dock door. Um, if you scrutinize the table, you'll see that that number is, um, uh, i- i- is different for, uh, for warehouses and distribution centers. Uh, the bottom half of the graphic is the warehouses only. And in fact, one of the things that I, that I think is striking is that we try, we ranked that, uh, by, from the lowest number of square feet per door to the highest. The plan for this building is smack dab in the middle of that. Uh, you know, you have an outlier at one end, Home Depot, which has something over twenty thousand square feet per, uh, per door, uh, in its building. And at the other end, you have, uh, uh, you have something that is a, a warehouse, a moving and storage warehouse, that's, that's a small number. But, uh, the, uh, majority of these, uh, projects, you know, have somewhere between about, uh, five and nine thousand square feet of space, and we have about sixty-seven hundred square feet, you know, for, for each one of the doors. So, just, you know, based on configuration depth, storage capacity as opposed to the capacity to move things quickly through a building from one truck to another, you know, this design clearly, you know, falls in the center of the uses that are classed as, as warehouses and distribution centers. Now, the applicant does not have a tenant for this building. The applicant has had numerous contacts with prospective tenants or users who would have an interest in locating in South Windsor. Um, but until the applicant can provide a defined timeline for building occupancy, uh, the property isn't really that readily marketable. All approvals necessary for the development need to be in hand for a prospective occupant to commit. On several occasions, the applicant has been approached with specific tenant requirements, but without a known occupancy date, the discussion did not progress. The process started in March twenty nineteen, when the applicant retained GEI, uh, to provide habitat and related exploratory services concerning the natural diversity database at DEEP. You know, one of the, uh, permits that we need is for, uh, is for stormwater runoff, construction period de-watering. The process to get to qualify for that general permit with DEEP requires going through this NDB process. It was very time-consuming, uh, identifying plants took, uh, ten different site visits over eight months. Uh, various animal species were also identified. In order to engage in this, because of the seasonal nature of some of the, the biology involved, there were very narrow testing periods during which these visits had to occur. Um, so that the, the, the process, that, that one process, dealing with that, that one type of permit, um, took twenty-seven months after the initial request was made. The, you know, final determination letter is provided only when the applicant is actively pursuing site plan approval by submitting a site plan, a site development plan to the municipality. The applicant, uh, anticipates starting development once all the required, uh, local, uh, state and federal permits are, are obtained. But, you know, this, this is, you know, what has been referred to, I think referred to in some of the questions from the public and maybe from the commissioners, that's a, a spec building or a speculative building. The applicant wants to position in the marketplace, uh, so, so that it can be as close as possible to being shovel-ready, to use another, um, development term. Coming back to the commission and getting a special exception use approved, you know, whether it is truck terminal or something entirely different, um, and possibly amending the other permits that, uh, the applicant's working on, would really be a self-defeating task and it would be orders of magnitude more difficult for the applicant than, than simply proceeding, uh, with the warehouse distribution center use. I guess to, to, to wrap up, to come back to the, uh, you know, to the table we've put up on the, uh, on, on the board, uh, just to quickly go through some of those ratios for the, the truck terminals. In a couple of cases, they're less than a thousand square feet, uh, per door, uh, with a, with one exception being the, the very large facility that FedEx is operating on Kennedy Road, which is, uh, about twenty-eight hundred, which is still, um, uh, a, a lower ratio than, uh, I think all but one of the, uh, buildings classified as a warehouse. Uh, that concludes my remarks on this point, and, uh, I, Paul, I'll address you further when we, uh, do a summation at the, at the close of the, uh, at the close of the applicant's presentation. Thank you.
Okay. So much for housekeeping, thank you. Uh, with respect to acoustics or sound, uh, the state and local noise, uh, the state statute and the local noise ordinance pertaining to that do not apply to tractor-trailers. We've already revealed that. Sound from the loading and unloading of each truck is internal to the trailer in the building. They pull up to the loading dock and then they unload into the building. And as we are three hundred and sixty feet to the closest home on Edgewood Drive, and it is around the corner from the loading docks, we agree to comply with all town and state ordinances with respect to sound, and to our understanding, they are all enforceable. Uh, as to ADA that came up, we will be compliant, the entire building will be compliant with American Disabilities Act requirements. It's town staff and the building official, building department, of course, will, will assure that. Uh, as to truck idling, we will also be compliant with that, limited idling law, um, as required by the law, and we'll post signs at the facility to that effect. Uh, so you're not allowed to idle trucks for more than a limited amount of time, and that is enforceable, and we will be compliant at this facility, and we'll post signage to remind drivers that they need to do it and any, any other staff members at the facility. Uh, we have not applied for a tax abatement with the town. Uh, it is premature for such a decision. The purpose of such an abatement would be to lower the tenant's occupancy costs. An abatement, if granted, helps to attract quality tenant when we are competing with other communities, and examples of that for industrial enterprises in this town, uh, I was involved in some of that. Um, the Home Depot, we're competing with an outside, uh, site for that particular facility. Uh, DST Output, which is now called Broadridge, uh, down along I two ninety-one as well, uh, that, uh, we were competing with states, it was sites out of state, I was part of that process, selection process, uh, with, uh, DSC Systems, who was doing it at the time. And also the Hyundai Mobus Facility over on Sullivan Avenue, um, they were competing with, with out of, uh, South Windsor sites. Uh, so, the abatements help seal the deal, I've been involved with that many times, and they also help to lower the cost for the tenant, uh, that's the tenant's occupancy costs. So, um, strong consideration for that, uh, but we're not at the time to make that decision whether or not to pursue one. We don't even have a tenant yet, uh, so we'll have to, we'll have to look at that later. But they are not ready, our clients are not ready to appear to make decision on that, we're focusing on getting entitlements, um, first, so we have a project. As to site lighting, uh, the zoning regulations allow zero point two-five foot candles, which is very low volume of light at the residential property line, that's the maximum. Uh, and we are at zero foot candles along the entire easterly and southerly lines. We register a zero point two-five foot candle, again, which is what you allow at the property line maximum. You have to go a hundred and twenty-five feet into the site away from our southerly property line and two hundred and twenty feet into our site away from house lots to the east of our building, uh, in order to get that, and also a hundred, a hundred feet from the Temple Beth Hillel property into the site to get to a zero point two-five foot candle, which is a very low intensity of illumination. Uh, every, all the lumineers are dark sky compliant, full cutoff, pointing down, uh, as, as you're used to, uh, and as we've gone through your architectural design review committee. We conform to the zoning regulations for a distribution center use without necessity for a zoning variance, without the necessity for zoning text amendment, a zone change or special exception, just a waiver for the pole height westerly of the building in the truck court. As discussed previously, the site has been targeted for industrial use in the plan of conservation development and on the town's zoning map for many decades and through many planning and zoning commissions, uh, predating, even predating this commission. We're conforming to your regulations. After extensive review of these documents, our, that's the plan of conservation development, zoning regulations, et cetera, our clients have purchased a pro- subject property and developed a site plan sensitive to neighbor concerns and out of respect for them. Thank you for your consideration, our entire design team is available for any Q and As, and I'd like to return it to the forum to, uh, Attorney Connor.
Uh, thank you, Peter. Uh, I'm going to present something of a, uh, of a summation, but I would like to reserve time to, uh, rebut any, uh, either evidence or argument by the intervenors or members of the public. My client's application presents the commission two basic questions. Does the applicant's site plan meet all the requirements of the South Windsor zoning regulations concerning the warehouse and distribution center use and accessory uses as shown on the plan applicable to the I industrial zone? And does the applicant's site plan meet all the requirements concerning the requested waiver of the twenty-five foot maximum pole height for outdoor lighting? Uh, the first question is obviously the most important and excludes many of the factors that would be considered if we were here for a special exception or to amend the zoning map. As our state Supreme Court held nearly thirty years ago, quote, "The designation of a particular use of property as a permitted use establishes a conclusive presumption that such use does not adversely affect the district and precludes further inquiry into its effect on traffic, municipal services, property values, or the general harmony of the district." That's a case called Friedman versus Planning and Zoning Commission of Rocky Hill, cited in nineteen ninety-two. The requirements of your regulations fall into the categories of use in, in section four point one point four, traffic requirements in section four point one point five, area density and dimensional requirements in four point one point six, and the Article Six Site Development Regulations as applicable. In each case, the regulations apply as they existed on the date when the site plan application was filed, and that's pursuant to the general statutes, section eight two H. Uh, and I know that it has been suggested, including by a former member of the commission, that this can just be denied because it was a mistake to make this an I-zone. It was a mis- or it was a mistake to make warehouses and distribution centers permitted uses in the I-zone. Uh, you know, that is, is not the law, uh, it is not, uh, a decision that is, is permissible to make. The app, the application is entitled to be judged by the standards contained in the regulations as they stood on the date the application was filed. Now, to go through some of the requirements for the sections that I, uh, that I just cited, um, the I-zone is subject to section four point one per five, uh, point, point five on traffic requirements. Um, and that provides that, uh, to provide for the orderly flow of inbound and outbound site-generated traffic, and to minimize the inherent conflicts between outbound left and inbound left maneuvers, applicants must demonstrate to the commission satisfaction that the site generation traffic is able to enter and exit the site safely without disruption to the external traffic flow. On-site queuing positions must be adequate to prevent site-generated traffic from queuing on public streets. Site lines for the existing traffic from the site drive must be satisfactory for the prevailing speed of approaching traffic. The applicant must demonstrate that the design pro- provides for safe and orderly vehicular and pedestrian flow and movement of traffic, and minimizes vehicular and pedestrian conflicts. Delivery areas must be located so that normal operations are not impeded or compromised. An engineered traffic report must be provided with the application to demonstrate the adequacy of traffic flow and design. I believe that the, uh, reports that have been submitted by Langton Engineering, uh, satisfy, uh, all of those requirements. In addition to what is contained in four point one point five, uh, there is a provision in, uh, section six point one point five also dealing with traffic and circulation considerations, uh, that are applicable in, uh, uh, in, in all zones in town that also include references to the adequacy of queuing, site lines, uh, and safe and orderly vehicular and pedestrian flow and movement and location of, of delivery and require, um, uh, a, uh, a, a report prepared by a professional engineer. Uses different words, but covers essentially the same concepts as, uh, section four point one point five. It's very important to note that these regulations say nothing about the effects of traffic remote from the site's own driveways, or the provision of any off-site improvements. This makes- This makes the regulation consistent with the requirements of Connecticut law with respect to site plan uses. As the Supreme Court held in the Friedman case, which I cited a few minutes ago, the designation of the warehouse and distribution center use in the industrial zone precludes further inquiry into its effect on traffic, and that is traffic away from entrances and exits. What the Friedman case was, was about was the extent to which the town could study and regulate geometry, traffic, and so on, at-site driveways, but it does not, you know, open the door to the consideration of the functioning of other intersections. Nonetheless, we have provided that. The Langton Engineering study shows that not only are there safe movements at-site driveways, but the nearby traffic impacts have been studied, with the conclusion that existing levels of service can be maintained with optimi, optimization of signal timing. Now, this same, same report has, in the process of getting the Office of State Traffic Administration administrative determination for, for the project, because it is considered a major traffic generator, that the, the traffic engineers at the OSTA have, have concurred in the analysis and the extent of the projected impacts on, on nearby intersections. Further, the traffic study began with a very conservative assumption that the, the use in the Institute of Traffic, excuse me, Transportation Engineers classification is what they call a high-cube warehouse. This involves, you know, some more traffic than, than ordinary warehouses, so therefore the, we've made the conservative assumption that, that this will be the use and that will be the, the operational pace of, of traffic into and out of the facility. The improvements in the site plan meet the area density and dimensional requirements for the, for the I-zone contained in table 4.1.6A, and as our design team has pointed out, has substantially exceeded the minimum requirements for setbacks and for screening, and has kept building coverage and previous coverage well below the maximums. Your regulations also contain in the site six, excuse me, in section six, a variety of site development regulations, including preservation of natural landscape features, which are providing a buffer from residential zones in the east and south, and, and satisfying all the numerical requirements for parking spaces, loading spaces, and electric vehicle spaces in the passenger vehicle parking lots, and for the internal landscaping of the parking lots. The internal circulation area provides adequate pedestrian sidewalks from the parking areas to and from the pedestrian entrances. Under the provisions of section six for commercial industrial development, there's a requirement that onsite improvements shall meet acceptable engineering standards, drainage facilities shall be designed in accordance with the Town of South Windsor Public Improvement specifications. As we have discussed in relation to the, to the drainage report, the downstream drainage facilities that already exist are oversized, our detention facilities onsite have been designed so that although the total amount of flow from previous surfaces is going to increase, that the flow rate will actually be, will be decreased in order to mitigate any potential effects downstream as the water heads to the Connecticut River. You know, a couple of things that I'd like to point out about the screening that's being provided and the use of setbacks that are substantially in excess of the side and rear yard requirements of the regulations. In, during the hearing two weeks ago, you know, one of the issues that came up had to do with a, a case back in the 1960s that Mr. Parks put into the record, it's a Carolina freight carriers case. These types of mitigation requirements that currently exist under your regulations and that we have, we have exceeded, did not exist in the East Windsor regulations in approximately 1962, when that facility was built. You know, that period of time, almost sixty years ago, you know, may have been the good old days for some purposes, but for purposes of safeguarding the environment and sophistication in planning principles are, are more of a bygone time, and both your regulations and the design provided by this applicant provide, you know, much greater mitigation of any off-site problems that could be created for neighbors. Many of the public and intervener comments have been focused on sound generated by diesel trucks going to and from the facility, or during their operations at the facility. These manufacturers, the manufacturers of these vehicles have their design to, to, are regulated by the Federal Highway Administration, which regulates the maximum amount of emissions that are measured at a distance of fifty feet. And in fact, many of the remarks that were made by intervenors and member, the members of the public pointed out how loud these vehicles can be at fifty feet, when in fact, the place where it would be measured as a stationary source is not fifty feet from the vehicle, but from a point, from a point on the property line. At that great distance, the measurements would be substantially diminished from what they would be at fifty feet. The town's current ordinance limits the measurement at the industrial residential boundary to 61 decibels daytime and 51 decibels at night. These are approximately the levels experienced by a person near an air conditioning unit and for light automobile traffic. The distance all by itself, plus the existence of substantial amount of vegetation, soft soil surfaces and other factors attenuate the sound at greater distances. Hard objects such as buildings reflect the sound, so that a great deal of the sound energy in the truckyard will be directed to the west, toward the adjacent industrial properties and away from the residential properties. This project will comply with all state, federal, and local laws and regulations relating to sound generated by its operations, and the Town of South Windsor has adequate means in its own ordinance and through cooperation with the DMV to police any violations caused by individual trucks. The applicant is shown by substantial evidence that his site plan is in compliance with all the relevant provisions of the South Windsor zoning regulations for its use in the zone, and the approval should be granted by the commission. With regard to the requested waiver for 35-foot light poles instead of the standard 25 feet, the regulations have six specific criteria for this waiver request. One, traffic and other hazards will not be created. Two, general property values will be conserved. Three, no adverse effects on existing uses in the area. Four, general welfare of the community will be served. Five, no adverse environmental impact will be created. And six, topography of the land makes the property suitable for higher poles. The poles will be lower than the building and most of the tree canopy of existing vegetation, and will be located only in the truckyard on the west side. As Mr. DiMali pointed out, there is a lighting and photometric plan that's included in the application that shows no spillage of light across the project boundary. This is the one and only part of this application to which any consideration of general property values is relevant. The applicant introduced into the record earlier a number of comparable sales of single-family homes in developments adjacent to the I-zone, including homes initially built near the Carlos Pasta plant after the most recent expansion, which, I would remind the commission, was done with a waiver allowing for 35-foot-high lighting poles. Since the time that information was put into the record by the applicant, there's been an additional comparable sale reported on the multiple listing service on Edgewood Drive, which we infer was close to the asking price of $349,000, since it was reported only three days after the listing. And according to the multiple listing service, that price, assuming that our inference is correct, would be, represent appreciation of about 48% since the current owners purchased it in October of 2018. I have a number of points that I'd like to make addressing the intervention petitions, but I understand that the intervenors may not be done with their case, so I'd like to reserve some time in, in rebuttal after any presentation that, that they may wish to make. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does that complete your application? Okay. Then at this time, we'll turn to our town staff, our town planner, Michelle Light.
Thank you. I, I did want to report to the commission that the inland wetlands agency did render a decision on this on November 3rd, they did approve the application, they did have their standard approval conditions, and I just want to read a couple other ones into the record. They did establish, request the bonds in amount of $50,000 for erosion sedimentation control measures, and $100,000 for the installation of the stormwater structures and the mitigation proposed on the site. They were looking for the area around the wetlands to not be mowed but once a year, so it cannot be established as turf grass. They were looking for the inspection of the detention basin to occur every three years. This is something that the attorney from Carlos Pasta had requested to both wetlands and to this planning and zoning. The wetlands did put that as approval condition. They also did put approval condition that no vehicle washing or vehicle maintenance other than necessary for an emergency can occur on site. There was the comment that if they did want to do some kind of vehicle washing facility, they'd have to come in and show plans for that, to show it's a self-contained unit. Those are the primary approval conditions that were put on there, and, and once the minutes are finalized from that meeting, we'll submit those for the record. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll turn to our town engineer, Jeff DeLittl. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question regarding this application. We received an updated memorandum about the traffic, and one of the questions I have is about the truck traffic. As the applicant stated, this says that during the AM peak hour, there'd be 16 trucks entering and leaving the facility. If I, my math is correct, the daily truck counts they presented over an 11-hour day also amount to 16 trucks entering and/or leaving the facility. So I'd like to see a daily truck distribution or projected daily distribution of trucks. Seems to be a pretty constant flow of trucks in and out of the facility the way this is presented.
Okay. Does that complete your report?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll go to public input. We have a numerous letters to be read into the record, and I'll turn to the interim secretary. Okay, we have a few commissioners that will be reading letters. Do you have a couple more? You want to start, Alan, with the two that you have?
Yeah, that'd be great.
So I have two emails on my hand, I'll start with this one here. This is from Barbara Lapenta. Subject for the Planning and Zoning Wetlands Department, the message is, "To the Planning and Zoning Committee, I oppose the proposal for the distribution warehouse at 25 Talbot Road. I have lived on Edgewood Drive for over forty years. Many years ago, I worked at the South Windsor Bank and Trust Company on John Fitch Boulevard, and back then, it was a challenge to get through the intersection at Governor's Highway and John Fitch Boulevard of Route 5. I can't imagine what the area will look like with so many additional cars and trucks. Another concern is the safety of children on school buses traveling through this area. The quality of life for surrounding families will be negatively impacted. Many families will be forced to leave their homes and neighborhoods that they love due to an unbearable amount of noise, air pollution, and traffic. This proposal has caused many of us distress and anxiety. I believe that this area is not suitable or appropriate for a distribution site." And that was from Barbara Lapenta. Next one I have is from James Richardson. Subject for the Planning and Zoning and Wetlands Department, "I'm writing regarding the proposal for a large warehouse at the intersection of Talbot Lane and Governor's Highway in town. Although I live far from the site, in parentheses, we live at 10 Long Hill Road, I am very concerned what this warehouse will do to the property values of our neighbors' homes and their quality of life. And driving around our beautiful town, I can't find another street where a massive warehouse is right next to residences, other than on Ellington Road across from the new Amazon Warehouse, where two houses sit alike, quote-unquote, 'little houses on the prairie.' Taking a look at Zillow Online, I found both of these homes, 283 and 289 Ellington Road, have been for sale for nearly 150 days, and in a time where building and bidding wars are common, commonplace within days of a new listing, the owners have significantly dropped their selling prices recently. I'm afraid our neighbors near this proposed warehouse will see their house values plummet in time as well. Regarding the debate about wetlands on the proposed site, a simple drive-by reveals a large section where hardwood trees are not growing, a signal to me that a wetland has prevented proper growth of trees. I also would like to point out that if one takes a drive along our state highways and interstates, you will see the occasional piece of land with dead and decaying hardwood trees sitting in the middle of what appears to be a swamp. This is a byproduct of moving dirt and changing the structure of an area when constructing a road or building homes and businesses. I now see this firsthand at my wife Holly Cabe, affectionately calls Grandpa's Pond, where three new houses now sit at 736, 740, and 746 Burnham Street in town. While growing up, Holly would play in the pond previously owned by her grandparents, the Johnsons. When the houses were built, were then dried up, wetland once was, always good. But now, due to the construction and the weather changes, the area behind 736 Burnham Street is once again a swamp. There are yard floods and heavy rains, and Burnham Street is often closed due to the flooding. Wetlands rarely dry up forever. I ask you to think about what you are doing to your neighbors. If this was your house, would you approve of the large warehouse, knowing your property value and quality of life would suffer?" And that was from James Richardson.
The next letter is from Susan Delhey, she's at 95 Cody Circle. "Dear Commissioners, my family and I are direct abudders to the proposed distribution center. I've already written a letter strongly opposing this development as an operation of this massive scale, will significantly diminish my family's quality of life and health and that of our community. Carlos Pasta has rightfully raised objections to this huge amount of diesel exhaust their operation will ingest, so much so they might even have to list diesel pollutants as an ingredient on their frozen ravioli. This is absolutely concerning, but these fumes and pollution will become a participant in abutting residents' daily lives and will be inhaled by the lungs of our children every day, all day. As a parent of a medically fragile 11-year-old, my last letter detailed the harm the piercing diesel engine jake break and backup alarm noise would have on her as a legally blind child, but that is only a portion of the trauma this project will inflict. I ask you to evaluate this proposed development with the thought that my daughter or any child in the neighborhood could be your child or grandchild. The harsh scale of this current proposal is not right for the location, and we look forward to supporting one which is smaller appropriate and maintains the health and quality of life for everyone." Then we hear from Kristen Andrews at 80 Cody Circle. "My name is Kristen Andrews, I live at 80 Cody Circle. We have lived here for over fifteen years, and our house faces the town-owned open space noted as 75 Cody Circle. And the potential distribution facility located at 25 Talbot Lane, we are strongly opposed to this project. This land borders several residential neighborhoods, and a 24/7 distribution center is not a welcome attention. We have a young child with asthma whose health will be directly affected by the effects of this potential distribution center. Will we be compensated for the decrease in property value to our house? Will we be compensated for any environmental or health issues that arise from this potential distribution center? If this distribution center at 25 Talbot Lane is allowed to be built, we all lose out on quality of life. Kristen Andrews, 80 Cody Circle." I'll do one more. This is from Jessica Vogelsang, she's at 79 Hilton Drive. "I would like to state my opposition to the proposed distribution center for 25 Talbot Lane. I do not believe that an industrial building of this size should be built near a residential area. The increase in traffic to the area, the noise, light pollution, along with the destruction of wildlife habitat are all of concern." The increase in traffic to the area, the noise, light pollution, along with the destruction of wildlife habitat are all of concern to me. This will be disastrous to abutting property owners and destroy the character of several neighborhoods in the area. It is detrimental on so many, many different levels and will significantly destroy the quality of life which we have grown to love and keeps us in South Windsor."
First one I have is, "My name is Amy Costa, and I live on Edgewood Drive within the 500-foot offset to the proposed development. I've lived in South Windsor for over 35 years and on Edgewood Drive for the past 11. Having lived in town for as long as I have, I've witnessed the vast changes to our once-quiet suburb in what is now quickly becoming an overdeveloped, over-commercialized town. What I cannot understand is how. Between the conversations with friends, family, and neighbors, along with the discussions circulating online, residents are strongly opposed to this monstrous development. I'd like to ask the committee, at what point will the town intervene to the mass development happening? When there's no green space left, just because a plot of land exists doesn't mean it needs to be built upon. If the job of the town's employees and volunteers is to serve its residents, and said residents are against overdevelopment, why does this continue to happen? It simply doesn't make sense, and neither does the construction of an almost 360,000-square-foot facility in the backyard of my fellow neighbors. The facility, we've been told, will operate 24/7, 365, with 54 loading docks and 111 trailer spaces. I am terrified of the impact this is going to have on me and my family. There's already a great amount of noise transmitted by the existing businesses, consistent bass radiates daily from machinery operating nearby, or the loud music blaring from the car audio place, and of course, we can't forget banging dumpsters from 2:00 AM to 5:00 AM. I am already forced to keep my windows closed, fans running, and sound machines on if I want any quiet or an attempt to sleep. My two young children, who need adequate sleep to learn, grow, and develop properly, are already frequently woken up at night by these noises. What do you think will happen with a facility operating 24/7 just feet from our home? What impact will the constant noise and inability to sleep have on their growth and development and our mental health? As someone who works from home, it is already quite maddening and will only get worse if you allow this development to pass. During this pandemic, my husband and I have been unable to evict a tenant of ours, and as such, we've also been unable to even access our own property. As good landlords, we want to complete routine safety inspections and maintenance, but have been told by our legal team that our tenant has the right to peaceful and quiet enjoyment of the property. My question to this committee is, where's my right to peaceful and quiet enjoyment of the home I own, maintain, and pay taxes on each year? How can I expect to enjoy peace and quiet with the constant beeping of countless tractor trailers backing into 54 loading docks or banging of drop trailers in the 111 trailer spaces? What more the unknown noise of machinery inside the proposed building since there's allegedly no tenant lined up? I urge this committee to see that a development of this nature has absolutely no place abutting 75% residential neighborhoods. If development of that land is required, and in my opinion, should be left as is due to the wetlands and wildlife that currently inhabit that land, then I suggest finding a more appropriate, feasible alternative that does the least harm to its neighbors and current occupants. The applicant has already shown multiple other plans, including residential, which I know would be much better received by me and many of my neighbors. A rezoning would be a better choice than the impending risk of complete devastation of the lives of everyone who lives in the impacted neighborhoods. Thank you for taking the time to read my statement and for your services to our town." A second letter from Lori Rondanon. I hope I pronounced that right. "I'm writing to express my opposition to the Talbot Road Governor's Highway warehouse construction. I've been following the public comment and wanted to add my concerns. I walk my dog on Governor's Highway daily, and there's very little room for a car to get by, let alone a tractor-trailer truck when a pedestrian is walking. It's very dangerous walking on this road with the current traffic. If you add a warehouse of that magnitude, the traffic on Governor's Highway will be out of control. In the AM hours, I often have to stand at the end of my driveway for a good five minutes waiting to cross the street to walk up to get to the Cody Circle development to walk safely. Please consider the negative impact this will have on numerous residents of the town. Also, the traffic all hours of the night will impede sleeping, as I can see lights and hear cars passing through my shades now. If it is a 24-hour operation, this activity will go on throughout the night. I'm not sure why the town would want to approve such application after hearing how many residents are opposed."
Next letter is from Yulf Johansson. He lives at 100 Sally Drive. "I've been following the discussion regarding the 25 Talbot Lane project for a while, and I was hoping to see a reasonable resolution, but the latest developments has made me very concerned and I'd like to speak up against the current proposal. I obviously recognize the landowner's right of use of land they invested in. I also like to argue that we, as a town, have an even stronger obligation in protecting our family's health and well-being and the investments they have in their homes and in the town. Putting the purely economic interest of a few investors ahead of the interest of 30-plus significantly impacted families is not, in my agreement, what I feel we should, or as a town, should do. The fiscal impact statement from Gorman &amp; York claims that the tax revenue from the Talbot Lane project is comparable to Aldi's warehouse that represents about 0.99% of the grand list. I have no reason to believe that this new property, over time, will be more valuable than Aldi's, so a simple ratio of area gives that it will be about 0.54% of the grand list. Our family pays about $8,500 a year in property taxes. A 0.54% increase is $46 a year. I can't speak for all residents in South Windsor, but I strongly believe that compassionate majority of the people in South Windsor are not willing to sell out our neighbors' quality of life and sabotage their decades-long investment in South Windsor for a fast-food dinner. I'm certainly not. I urge the members of P&amp;Z to do whatever you legally can do to stop this project as it is presented and promote a more reasonable and less intrusive use of this parcel of land." Paul Lapenta from 168 Edgewood Drive. "Loud noise already comes from the present industrial companies, railroad trains, and Route 5. This noise will be coupled with excessive loud noise from the 50 tractor-trailer trucks and yard support equipment bouncing sound waves off a 40-foot-high building 800 feet long, along with a new berm and a 600-foot-long 50-year-old berm on the southwestern side of the project. There will be a funneling effect produced that directs this noise through the open space area owned by the town of South Windsor on Edgewood Drive. I feel this noise will be a hazard to the neighbors of this distribution center, and for this and other reasons, I am opposed to this project." This next letter is from Gary Crenshaw. Gary lives at 113 Edgewood Drive. It's entitled "The Forest Speaks." "She's a beautiful, peaceful forest surrounded by our lovely homes. Here in the solitude of her canopy is where our wildlife roams. There are endless trees and creatures that inhabit her dark, rich floor. Stories from her past make it an interesting place for those to explore. The forest speaks through the sound of its inhabitants to orchestrate a harmonious beat. If you listen closely, you'll hear songbirds whistling in the bushes or the sound of hoofed feet. Fast forward to a potential tragedy, you'll see a once-vibrant forest reduced to an asphalt lot. Familiar trees which were on her apron are sacrificed to make way for the development of this plot. The forest is no match for man's love affair with money or his destructive mind. Heavy equipment and hard-hat crews decimate the forest, leaving dust behind. God's beautiful creatures all evicted from their forest habitat, erasing homes for all those who ever crossed the forest's welcome mat. And propping a metal mountain up would ruin our neighborhood mystique. Our community joined together for a chance to let our forest speak." I do have one very lengthy comment from David Mills. He's of Edgewood Drive. And there are several exhibits and attachments that I know are on our website under the planning section. So I'm going to ask if anybody wants to see the detail to go there, but I will let you know the gist of his contribution here. His name is David Mills. He's a resident of the town of South Windsor. I'm a veteran of the United States Marine Corps. While in service, I completed six overseas deployments, five of which were Iraq and Afghanistan, most recent of which occurred in 2011. I am a subject matter expert in infantry, small arms, ordnance, and crew-served weapons systems, to include the M67-hand fragmentation grenade, the 40-millimeter grenade projectile, the M250 caliber, and MK-19 40-millimeter heavy machine guns, and the M224 60-millimeter mortar system. I have participated in and led hundreds of combat patrols and served as the range safety officer and range officer-in-charge for hundreds of live-fire ranges and have operated these weapon systems in the combat theater of operations." And then David proceeds with a background. During his research of the area, it has come to light that the applicant's property was once an Army encampment for an anti-aircraft defense of the Hartford Industrial Zone during the Second World War. Mr. Terry Files, and there's a subnote, lived here during the period and describes life in the town during Second World War with vivid accuracy, down to the barn and roads. He then goes on to talk about additional considerations with the UXO, which is something during Second World War II, this site would have been occupied by two or three M1, M2 90-millimeter anti-aircraft artillery pieces. There would have been a dud pit nearby to safely contain a damaged or defective round or fuse from these crew-served weapons, until the ordnance could be safely removed or destroyed by engineers. There also would have been a field ammunition supply point, which would have kept feeding the guns their 25 rounds per minute. In his conclusion, this site should be primarily cleared of any potential UXOs that may be lying dormant on-site, as it has been my experience that UXO does not get better with time. This is necessary for the safety of anyone going around these areas of interest, which I have highlighted on the attachment, and not only for the applicant, but any of the work crews that will be operating on this site to serving large amounts of earth, as well as the local residents that abut the property. This is, "Thank you for your time and attention regarding this matter, David Mills, Edgewood Drive."
Does that complete all the letters?
That completes, yes.
Okay. Then... Okay. So at this time, we'll hear from the public. First, those in favor of the application. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of the application? Hearing and seeing none, those against. And I want to remind the public, we're going to give you your three minutes. We do have a timer up here now. So if you do not complete your comments within that time, we will give you additional time after others have spoken. We have Steve Grich from Judy Lane.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Check, 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 check. Good evening, everybody. My name is Steve Gratchill of 155 Judy Lane, South Windsor, Connecticut. Father of two young kids. During the day, I am an EAS 23 of the executive branch of the United States Government. Tonight, I'm here as a tax-paying resident and a father. I've been following most of the statements being made, residents, interveners, and developers' teams. I've noted several inaccuracies in some of the testimony and would like to bring forth irreplicable data to prove otherwise. The first item I'd like to address is the short-term, long-term health risk that this facility would bring on the community that each of you is in service of. For the record, here are three copies of a published finding by the National Institute of Health, Department of Health, and Human Services regarding residential proximity to environmental hazards and adverse health outcomes. I got copies here. This study is actually collaborated by the National Institute of Health with over 100 contributors from internationally known, renowned scientists, medical professionals, about the effects of things like traffic, manufacturing, that close to a residential neighborhood. So those findings are just given. I'm not going to go into them exactly, but I could tell you some of the adverse effects would be childhood cancer, cardiovascular, respiratory illnesses, end-stage renal disease, and diabetes. Trying to stay within three minutes. Second item. Disclosure of the property inhabited in discussion. Over several times, we've heard over the past testimony and recourse from the developer that they cannot say who the occupant of the property will be. I just don't understand that, having owned businesses before in my past and being subject to many large contracts now. A non-disclosure agreement can be done so that you, the people, can do your due diligence when looking out for our best interests as the residents. Third item. Wildlife specialist from the developer, 1026 2021. In speaking, Emily Perko, consultant, certified soil specialist, only mentioned a single type of frog and two types of turtles. When she did not mention at all any of the, she called them migratory species of that time. However, within the past 30 days, there are coyote, deer, red-tailed hawks, turkey, turkey vultures, black vultures, bald eagle, owls, brown bats, garter snakes, black racer snakes, bobcats, fisher cats, numerous migratory bird species, and back in 2018, we had a female black bear with cubs. When I submit this, there's pictures of each of these from the last 30 days, including a bald eagle. Fourth item. As I sit here over the weeks and days and hours, there is literally zero benefit I see coming into this community of this proposed facility. Definitely not for the residents there and not for the community in whole. When we start talking about tax abatements, is that the three-minute mark?
Yes.
Okay. I think I'm almost...
Your three minutes are up.
I had like a sentence short, so I'm pretty good. I do this for a living.
Okay.
I'll give you the whole thing here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Junior Rodriguez, I believe. Is there J.R. Rodri... Oh, okay. Brian Wiley.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Brian Wiley. I live at 954 Main Street here in South Windsor, and I am an abutter to Newberry Brook, where it passes under Main Street. I am here to express my concern with the stormwater assessment that's been done. The report talks very little about the increased flow that will be directed off of this property into the Newberry Brook. It does mention it, but it does not highlight it as an issue for the downstream portions of Newberry Brook or the culvert that passes under Main Street. Looking at the report, the amount of land on the parcel, which will now be discharging into Newberry Brook, increases by approximately 2X, and the amount of runoff per acre increases by approximately 3X because it's mostly hardscape. As a result, the amount of increase, the amount of flow off of this parcel into the Newberry watershed increases by approximately 600%. And for a three-inch rainfall, that's an additional 3 1/2 acre-feet of water going into Newberry Brook. For a 25-year storm, which is a six-inch rainfall, that's an increase of over seven acre-feet of water going into a fairly small brook and having to pass under Main Street through the culvert adjacent to my house. In addition, the flow persists for much longer. While the plan does keep the flow below the current peak, in order to move all of that water, it continues to flow for a much longer period of time than it currently does. And I can tell you, from watching the water pass under that culvert, that the water that comes from the rest of the basin persists for many hours after a rainfall. And so I have concerns about whether enough analysis has been done to make sure that we're not increasing the overall flow rate after a storm, not just in the moments immediately following the rainfall event. Also, with all due respect to the attorney for the applicant, I can tell you firsthand that the drainage system on Newberry Brook is not adequate for... that the drainage system on Newberry Brook is not adequate for accommodating additional flow. I've, I've provided some, some pictures. On August nineteenth of this year, when we had the very significant rain event that I'm sure we all remember, we got approximately five inches of rain in South Windsor, and the Newberry Brook backed up behind the Main Street culvert, and I ended up with four feet of water in my yard. Water came within approximately a foot of my foundation and nearly overtopped Main Street. Any additional water added as a result of this development would most probably have ended up in my basement and I would have had a flood insurance claim.
Um, we'll give you more time after. We are gonna try and keep to our...
That's fine, I'm, I'm basically done, those were my points. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, Wayne Barra, seven twenty, Governors Highway?
Yes. I'll ask Caitlin to get the things set up. Very great. Thank you, good evening. My name is Wayne Botha, I live at seven twenty Governors Highway. First of all, I thank you Commissioners for your service, I appreciate all the hours that you spend on this board. I oppose this application, it is the wrong development for this site today, and it will be the wrong development forty years from today should the bo- building fall into disrepair such as the Mastek Building. Cutting down thirty acres of forest to build a freight terminal will have, that will have over three hundred tractor-trailers per day down a residential street is wrong, especially when we already have empty space and abandoned buildings on Route Five which would be better suited to this purpose. Specifically, I want to draw your attention to two items in the municipal fiscal impact analysis. The first item is that the impact analysis states there is a facility, there is a need for a facility with good access to road and highway network. That is the driving reason behind this application. However, the property at twenty-five Talbot Lane does not have good access to a road network because Governors Highway is a town road and it cuts through a residential area. Secondly, I would like to question the numbers provided this evening around the traffic. I'm looking at the Langen Report, the previous copy of the Langen Report, page six, table one, stated that the peak AM traffic was two hundred and seventy-five vehicles and the peak PM traffic was two hundred and fifty-three vehicles. That would have been a total of around five twenty-five vehicles per day. Tonight, we heard that the total will be around two hundred and ten vehicles per day. So we'd just like to confirm what is the actual traffic per day. All right. Um, the final thing I've got is a video of tractor-trailer traffic past my street. I understand that some people have already seen the video, but I also understand this is the only way to get the video entered into the re- record. So I'll play the video, it's just under two minutes long, and I'm done. I thank you for your service.
Okay, your, your time has expired, so we'll have to play the video later.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have Emma Pafandi, forty-six Elizabeth Street.
How do I do this? Do I have to do this? Can I please, can you please, oh, you don't want to do this? You want me to read it? Can I read it for her?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. Hi, my name... Hi, my name is Emma, and I'm doing this because all my family goes to the old road for walks. There are tons of animal life and Mother Nature and not much, much space for them to live. So if you destroy it, all the animals will just be coming into people's yards and making nests and never letting the people out of their homes. It's not okay. Please don't make the building. There will be loud noises and it will wake up the whole neighborhood and it won't be fun. Everyone would be yelling about it, all the dogs would be barking, it would be super noisy and everyone will be mad.
Thank you, Emma. Okay, we have Sophia Pafandi. Sophia, am I pronouncing your name correctly?
Yeah. There you go. I'm not reading it for you. Come on, or don't. You can do it. Go. Go.
If you build this factory...
If you could tilt that microphone down, please. Uh, just the end, yeah. You can, yeah.
Fancy.
Thank you.
If you build this factory, then our walk-in trail will be gone, people's backyards will be invaded, the air in our neighborhood will be disgusting and polluted. You will destroy the wildlife and yet, and add yet another factory to our town. Please do not build this, please do not build the factory.
Gotcha.
Okay, goodbye.
Okay, goodbye.
Thank you, Sophia. We have Miles Pafandi.
He's really eager. Just stand right there, go.
Uh, I don't know what to say. Goodbye.
Okay, good job, buddy.
And we have Melinda.
I woke up this morning and told them about the warehouse that was proposed, and their initial reaction was, no, that can't happen. And I said, well, the way to do and let everybody know what you think is you gotta show up and tell them. So I appreciate you giving them the time to say what they were thinking. As I read over the lighting height waiver, my ta- attention was drawn to the six criteria that appear, appear to be of value to this committee as well as to the applicant. If important with respect to lighting, why would they not be of equal value when, with regards to the building itself? Several items stood out, but I will mention the two most important to me. Number one, does it create traffic or other hazards? Number four, does it serve the general welfare of the community? As mentioned in the air quality and land use handbook provided by another, I think Mills, a warehouse with this number of docks and tractor-trailers may increase the rate of cancer in those homes located within five hundred feet of the pollution. My family and others like mine will have a lot to lose. I am also interested to know how this pollution, the continued diesel exhaust, will impact Carla's Pasta. It's my understanding that the loading docks are now closer to Carla's Pasta. Does Carla's Pasta have an HVAC system capable of filtering these pollutants from entering the building? How will the pollution affect the products and the health of those consuming the products? More importantly, how will it impact the health of the employees? I ask you to deny this application and stand for the health and safety of our future.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Pete Andrews, please.
I hadn't planned on speaking tonight. I had not planned on speaking tonight, but I did reserve some time. I'm gonna let Wayne play his video, but while I'm up here, I just would like to ask, how is it, could the applicant have any idea how many tractors are gonna come in and out every day if they don't know who the applicant is? How, how is that possible? You're gonna tell us that there's two hundred, two hundred coming in a day? You don't know who it is, though, right? I mean, how is, we're gonna just get a, some random number and, but we don't know who the applicant is? All right. I'll let Wayne, I'll let Wayne play his video. Thank you for all your service and listening, appreciate it.
Order, please. Olivia and Bella Giammarino, Judy Lane.
Hello, sorry, I'm short. Hello, I'm Isabella Giammarino, I live at one thirty-nine...
Excuse me, um, you'll have to move the microphone in front of you and try to have it about three to five inches from your mouth, please.
Okay. Hello, I'm Isabella Giammarino, I live at one thirty-nine Judy Lane.
Hi, my name is Olivia Giammarino and I live at one thirty-nine Judy Lane.
My parents bought our house in two thousand and four, and our neighborhood had only three children in it. They had brought the children to our neighborhood with being my older brother and my older sister. Growing up, safety was the biggest thing that I had that was like forced upon me, and so I had the triangle of safety. My friends couldn't, we couldn't leave the triangle between our three houses, and now there's a whole bunch of little kids from ages two to sixteen in our neighborhood, um, like just living on Edgewood, Judy, Barbara, and Elizabeth.
So I don't think adults really know how big of an impact this warehouse is going to leave on all of the kids because we're always like playing outside with our friends or family, and if there's trucks coming by all the time, we won't ever be able to have our freedom and play outside with our parents outside. It will become a priority for adults to be outside with us. If this warehouse is built, there'd be dangerous wildlife like bobcats and coyotes, they've already started to be pushed into our neighborhood, which is very dangerous because as I already said, they are kids. At some point, they're going to get hurt either from a truck or wildlife. It is very important that you do not allow the warehouse to be built because all the kids on Edgewood, basically, it's going to be in their backyard and they couldn't see like their friends and everyone else. I know how this feels because we have an industrial park behind my house, which still freaks me out when I see people back there so close to my house, and that's why you should not build a warehouse, it's just too dangerous.
So I'm, hang on, so I'm fourteen right now, and I'm really close to the driving age. I'm really excited about it, too, but being part of Edgewood is, behind it is Carla's Pasta, and in the winter and fall time, once all of the leaves come down, the building is extremely visible to anyone, and so at a certain time of the night, or like the day-ish time, when the light shines down on it, it will reflect, and with this building being so much like bigger and so much closer like to us, the mass of it's gonna be bigger, and so the sun's shining, it could like, it could blind drivers and kids play in the road, and a lot of serious issues could come from this. I, although I'm just four years away from like college, some of the kids in my neighborhood were just born last year. Okay. Sorry.
There are two of them.
Sorry. We were...
Uh, please continue.
Oh, okay. Some of them were just born last year. Do you really want them to grow in a, grow up in a community that's become over-commercialized for two big, for big companies? Or do you want them to grow up in a residential zone with family and children playing? I remember when I was little, being the only girl in the neighborhood, playing with the boys when life was easy. Now that I'm grown up, I can't take back being a little kid, but I can speak up for my neighborhood and it's a safe place for others to grow up like I was able to.
Okay, thank you very much. Roy Costa, one fifty-two Edgewood Drive.
Thank you. So I have a couple of my neighbors who are actually going to give me some of their time, and I believe they signed in as well. If you guys will just raise your hand so they know.
Um, we're gonna hold you to the three minutes.
I'm not gonna be able to get through this in three minutes.
Okay, well, we will allow you to come back up afterwards.
What if they stand up here with me?
Pardon me?
Can they stand up here with me?
Uh, if...
That'll give them their three minutes, too, you know? I mean, everybody's got three minutes, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Go ahead.
All right. During the last hearing, Commissioner Wagner stated that he wanted some clarification as to whether or not this would be a freight terminal, a trucking terminal, or a distribution center, and I'd like to provide some insight for this board on that. I've been in the freight transportation and logistics industry for eighteen years, where I've held and currently hold a valid Connecticut Class A CDL. I spent three years working for a site development company in Colchester, went on a drive professionally for an aerospace freight company, and over the course of the last eight and a half years, in addition to being a professional driver, I've been involved in expediting, dispatching, as well as logistics management for the company I currently work for. I'd like to start by giving a simple definition of freight. Freight in its simplest terms is goods transported by bulk, truck, train, ship, or aircraft, right? A terminal is a processing node for freight. So what does that mean? If you think of a terminal in terms of an airport, um, you, you have an airport terminal which is not the airport, right? The airport is the facility, and the terminal is a location within the airport, and that terminal serves as a processing node where passengers get loaded and unloaded. So you have all these airplanes, they come from all across the country, all across the world, they come to this one facility, which is known as the airport, and these passengers get unloaded into a terminal. That is the process of unloading, which is one function of a terminal. The other function of a terminal is the process of loading. You have passengers that come to the terminal, again, a location within the airport, and they're loaded onto an airplane, and the airplane takes them somewhere else. The same is true with a term, a train terminal and a bus terminal. They are locations within a train station and a bus station, and they act as a processing node for loading or unloading people. So then what's a freight terminal? A freight terminal works the exact same way as all of these other examples. You have freight comes from all over the country, all over the world, it's brought to one location or a facility, which in this case would be a distribution center. That freight enters a freight terminal, which is a location within the distribution center.
Excuse me.
Yep.
This is a site plan for a warehouse.
I'm getting to that.
Okay, um, we've already heard testimony about a freight terminal, and this is not that. So could you please get to new evidence?
Um, I, I actually think this is exactly what a freight terminal is, and that's what I'm trying to explain to the commission today.
Okay, that's not what the application is?
I understand that, but that's my point. They're, they're putting in an application for a building that is something other than what it is.
Okay.
Because inherently, you cannot... Because inherently, you cannot have a distribution center without a freight terminal. A freight terminal is a function of a distribution center.
They're two different things. They're two different things.
Do you have a definition of what a freight terminal is? Because in the rules and regulations of planning and zoning, it just says-
There's a definition in Webster's Dictionary.
There actually is no definition of a freight terminal in Webster's Dictionary. There's a definition of freight and a terminal. And freight is cargo and a terminal is a processing node for the cargo, which is exactly what happens in a distribution center. You have freight that comes in, it's unloaded, and it's reloaded onto another truck. That is a freight terminal. In fact, if you look at their original application-
I'm not gonna debate this-
Okay.
-back and forth. If you have new information, please provide it.
I am trying to provide that for you, sir.
Okay. I really don't need to hear about a freight terminal, okay? I'm looking for new information.
So you're just gonna take them on their word, but you wouldn't be willing to listen to-
I'm gonna take them on the merits of the application. I'm giving you an opportunity to speak.
Right.
So please finish up.
I mean, I don't know what you want me to say. I was, I'm trying to explain to you that this is a freight terminal and you're telling me that you don't wanna hear that. So how can I continue when you're telling me that you don't wanna hear what I have to say?
At this point, I think you're done then.
I mean, it just, it doesn't make sense, right? You're supposed to listen to the residents and I'm-
We're looking for information pertinent to the application. You're talking about something else, so.
Is the application not for a distribution center?
It is.
It is, right? That's what they're claiming it is.
That's what it is for. That's what the application is for. If it's a different use, it would be something else. So I believe you're done speaking if you don't have new information.
Okay, so then, so I'll- I'll refrain from the freight terminal portion, although I have to disagree with you that this is a distribution facility because it is not. And I've been in the business for eighteen years and I know the difference, okay? So I'll disagree with you on that and I'll move on. I just have to find my place here. So as a truck driver and somebody who deals with truck drivers on a regular basis, there are GPS systems that are designed for truck drivers that tell you where to go to avoid toll roads or, I'm sorry, like Meyer Parkways or low underpasses or any of that stuff. If you pick a location anywhere in the northeast portion of this country from this facility and you put in 25 Talbot Lane, on a truck driver GPS, you know where it's gonna take you? Route thirty to Governor's Highway. That means every single truck that comes to this facility is going to come through that portion of Governor's Highway. That creates a massive safety issue for everybody that lives in that area. We've already been told that this ordinance can't be enforced and so inherently, we're gonna be creating extremely dangerous situations where trucks are gonna be using a portion of that road that was never designed for that type of traffic. And all of these trucks are gonna be queuing or waiting to queue into this facility on Governor's Highway in front of these houses all day long, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And because you know that this facility by design cannot accommodate that much truck traffic, which I don't know where they get their numbers from because nobody has a tenant, but you know, they have a hundred and eight permanent truck driving jobs, which is, you know, it baffles me, but you can't contain that type of traffic within its boundaries. And it's a public hazard. It's gonna be putting the public safety as well as the well-being of the citizens in jeopardy. And these are the same citizens that these regulations are created to protect. There's been numerous comments made referencing this building and all the similarities to past projects that were approved by this commission. It needs to be made very clear, past performance does not dictate future results. So when comments like that are made, you're insinuating that because a project similar to this has been approved in the past, the expectation is that it should be approved again. And that's nonsense. That's the equivalent of being pulled over on the highway and telling the cop, "Hey, you can't give me a ticket for going eighty because I've done it for the last two years." That's all I have to say and again, I strongly disagree that this is a distribution center facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Edwards.
Largely came up because I forgot my pen before when I signed in, but, Dan Edwards, 131 Hilton Drive. I was thinking back a little bit to what their attorney was saying earlier and I think it was a little disingenuous to speak about a recent home value increase. I think the number was thirty-five percent with the presumed statement that the prospect of a to-be-determined freight terminal or warehouse has no impact. Our neighborhood was built, and with the exception of Cody Circle, was built in the late fifties and early sixties. I bought my house from the original owner. She was ninety-nine years old, I think she's still kicking around. But these houses needed significant work. I believe the analysis that they used was wrong for the percentage increase, it's because it was flipped. It may have been a year or two flip, but a lot of money was put into it. So to imply that a thirty-five percent value, it's very disingenuous. The other concern I have, just living on Hilton Drive, again, not within the five hundred foot, but something that's important, every time a truck goes by, the house shakes like a mini earthquake. I kid you not. And over time, you know, I'm very concerned about the shifts in the ground and how that might impact our foundations. Again, older houses, late fifties to early sixties. This happens all the day right now and if this is going to be a twenty-four-seven operation, you know, worried about the structural integrity of foundations at all hours of the day and also the roads. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jesse Gia Moreno.
Hello. You ever heard of the perfect storm? That's what this is, almost perfect. Rights of one industrial property over a hundred, the local homes. Remember the good old days when that large JCPenney warehouse right down the street there in Manchester was the biggest thing around? Now look what's happened in the past ten years. The internet and all these local warehouses where everybody's buying everything online is destroying everything. And unfortunately, from what I'm seeing, the planning and zoning is not keeping up with the times. So if these things are happening where you got these mega warehouses, what's gonna happen the next time where, you know, some of the other commercial or industrial facilities down the road decide to sell it to one giant conglomerate and they knock all of it down and build this ten thousand foot long warehouse, what's gonna happen then? So when are things gonna actually change in regards to that? Because obviously, things are not keeping with the times. Nobody could probably dispute the property owner's rights. If you had put property in a box that cannot be seen, cannot be heard, and cannot dispute a residential neighborhood and our rights. It's not like this thing is gonna be invisible to everybody. It's gonna move, it's gonna shake, everybody's gonna see it while it's being built and they're gonna continue to see it for as long as they live in the area unless people just get fed up and just leave the town. The choice of siding with this one property owner of the rights of everyone here and those that could not be here tonight is not right. How many of the distribution centers have residential homes on two-thirds of their sides from that aerial footage that the applicant's team had showed? I saw all of them, I know where the locations are. They're not smack dab in the middle of a neighborhood. Two-thirds of it is surrounded by neighborhoods. Everything was moved to the west-hand side, it's fantastic for the people of Cody, but now you're funneling all that sound right down Edgewood, right to Judy. And where my house is, I'm looking right down exactly where the property is. And I'm gonna have to sit there dinner every night and watch this thing unfold. Something I didn't think ever would happen in a million years. These truck loading docks, unloading and loading, they still make noise. Just because it's butted up against the loading dock doesn't mean that the material coming in and out, being dropped on it, is not going to make noise. I think that is an illusion. And combine four parcels in a one large facility that's gonna operate for twenty-four-seven, this is not what the intention should have been for in the middle of a residential area. And that's exactly what this is, this is a residential area. They have rights for an industrial, but it should not have been for this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Stacy Ramirez. Thank you. Thank you. Karen from eighty-eight Edgewood Drive. Okay, thank you Karen. What about Mark from? Okay, thank you. Robert Ploor.
Thank you everyone for giving me the opportunity to speak. Although I thought this was like the sign-up sheet when you came in. I didn't realize it was something to speak about, but I will say something. Ten years ago, I retired after ten orthopedic surgeries in the past ten years. There's one thing I like to do each night, almost each night. Is sit out on my porch and look out west on Governor's Highway, my little neighborhood, and I like to watch the sunset. All I can say to you is, don't take that away from us. Do not take the sunset away from me. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That's all the people who have signed up. Are there others who would like to speak? Gentleman with his hand up. Okay. We'll do this one gentleman and I'll turn to the interviewer.
Lee Lovering, twenty Elizabeth Street. Not gonna say too much. It was interesting though to see the slides that were put up by the applicant tonight showing every warehouse facility here in town. And if you observe it, other than I think all these, every one has no type of residential development around it. Also, I was kinda curious in that I think up until tonight's presentation, the tractor trailer traffic that had been mentioned daily number-wise was somewhere at the peak between one forty and one seventy. And tonight, all of a sudden, it dropped to I think one oh five or one oh six. So I'm just wondering where those other trailer trucks went. And the last thing is, my own personal observation as far as Governor's Highway as a road is concerned, traffic-wise, yesterday, I had reason to be on Governor's Highway once in the morning, once late in the afternoon. Come up Governor's Highway in the morning and I come to the proverbial intersection of Belden and Governor's Highway. And here's a fifty-two footer at the junction, it had come down Governor's Highway. And I look up at the driver in the cab and I give him one of these really looks. No eye contact, but you could see by the expression on his face, he looked like a kid with his hand caught in the candy jar. And then about four o'clock yesterday afternoon, I'm coming back up, I come to the same intersection and here's a FedEx truck. It had come down Belden, had taken the left turn by Mill and the River, come down Belden and was sitting there at the road junction of Belden and Governor's. Last thing about traffic and the road itself to give consideration to is the condition of that road right now. There's a chuck hole, it's an axle breaker just after you come off of Ellington onto Route Five at the first house. People either go by to the right and just miss the mailbox or they have to go over into the opposing lane to get around it. And the second one, ironically enough, and this is a section that I think was resurfaced a little over a year ago of Governor's Highway from Route Five up to the junction of Belden. And there's a chuck hole, big enough to vote, right at the entrance to Talbot.
Are you finished, closely finished?
Yes, sir. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
We'll invite you back up if, after others have spoken, but, I'm going to let the lawyer speak for the client that he represents.
Is the public being closed?
No? Okay.
Good evening, excuse me, Attorney John Parks, on behalf of neighbors at the budding to this project. Excuse me. What I use to focus on an application in a town with their zoning regulations is this form. And essentially, what it does is it takes the facts of the application and applies them to the requirements of your regulation and I compare those to see if we have compliance. And what I did on page two of the compliance is I copied your table four point one, point one A, permitted commercial and industrial uses. And if you look at that, warehouses and distribution centers are in the same section. Excuse me. And that's because functionally, they're similar. And on the table, it also lists trucks and freight terminals on the same line. And that's because functionally, they're similar. They allow trucks to unload and reload goods. The storage building has a lot of space, but not a lot of doors because you can't store, which is what warehouses do, in front of doors. The truck terminals, contrasting, have a lot of doors so that it can unload from one truck and put the freight into another truck. Now, if you look at the site plan submitted with this application, you'll see it has fifty-four doors. Why would it need so many doors if it was storing? It wouldn't. And if it was storing, it would be a warehouse. Why would there be so much truck traffic if they were storing items? They're not. So they're not storing items, so it's not a warehouse and it doesn't fit under the definition that is in your regulation for a site plan. If the trucks, what this is, is a freight terminal because by definition, and the definitions are all included in this compliance with regulation, by definition, on page four, cross dock truck terminals- on page four, cross dock truck terminals are relatively little storage, large number of truck docks, and they allow trucks to unload and reload. That term is not defined in your regulation. So you look to the commonly recognized meaning of those terms. And in page four, I've cited four sources of those definitions and they all come to the same thing. The plan that you have is a cross dock, which is synonymous with truck terminals. So you have an application that says it's a distribution center, but together with that application, you have a plan that shows a cross dock truck terminal. Now, the mere fact that they moved the doors from the east side to the west side doesn't change what's applied for here. What's applied for here is a building with a lot of doors so trucks can bring stuff and then other trucks can take stuff. There's no storing and because there's no storing, it's not a warehouse. So if you submit a plan that asks for treatment as a warehouse, excuse me, if you submit an application that asks for treatment as a warehouse and you are next to it, a plan that shows a cross dock truck terminal, what have you applied for? Your regulation is, takes the application and the site plan and looks at them both together because they're not separate things. That's all part of the application. And what you see is, in our application, we're calling it distribution, which is in a category with warehouses, so we get a site plan. You know why? There's very little traffic, excuse me, there's very little traffic with a warehouse because you have a building with just a few doors and you put stuff in there and what do you do? You store it. So you don't need 54 doors. You can't store in front of doors. Doors are for moving freight from one truck to another truck, which is exactly what this application shows you. So the fact that you take a cross dock truck terminal and you label it distribution center doesn't change what it really is. Look at the function that it does because your regulations regulate the use of the property. And the property is not being used for storage. It's not designed for storage. It's not laid out for storage. It would have five doors because you would bring stuff in and then you would find places with walls to store things. This has 54 doors. So the applicant doesn't get to tell the South Windsor Planning Commission that what looks and smells and tastes like a cross dock, I can't speak, cross dock truck terminal is actually a distribution center because if I call it a distribution center, then I don't have to go through what the regulation requires, which of course it's going to cost more money, of course it's going to cost more time, but it's required to go through the special exception process because of what it's designed to be used for. So take a look at the compliance with regulation. This is applying what's been submitted to your regulation, not from the perspective of the applicant, but from the perspective of someone just looking at whether the fact that you call it something makes it something, especially if your plan shows something other than what it's being called. And that's exactly what's going on here. Your regulation permits it. The missing ingredient is the definition of those terms. I've provided you with definitions of those terms. And my conclusion is, this site plan application can't be approved because it's not a use that's approvable by a site plan. Because it's not a warehouse, 4.1.1. It's not a distribution center because those are all defined, those are very similar things. There's very little truck traffic and they need very few doors. It's a truck terminal, cross dock truck terminal. And if you listen to the applicant, he told you all the things that go with cross dock truck terminals, trips in, trips out. Why would you need that with a storage facility? You don't because you're not a storage facility. You're just calling it that because that's the easy path. That's the path with the least amount of town oversight, but it's not what it is. So you have, you don't have to base this on noise, you don't have to base this on trees, you don't have to base this on neighborhoods. You just have to base it on your own regulation. So look at your regulation, apply what you're receiving to what your regulation actually says. Deny the site plan. The applicant can, doesn't want to, but can come back with the proper application, which requires a special exception pursuant to 4.1.1A, which is included on page two of my compliance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any intervenors, other interveners that would like to say something?
That was not on behalf of the intervenors.
Okay, thank you. It was on behalf of whom? I just want you to state that.
Multiple neighbors. I mean, if you want me to have them raise their hands, I will.
Sure, if you'd like, sure.
If I represent you in the neighborhood adjacent to this site, raise your hand for the commission, please.
Thank you very much. Okay. We had a gentleman trying to speak before. If you could step up, please. And Mr. Wentz, will you be after this gentleman? Thank you.
Rich Dela, 95 Cody Circle. I'm a director butter. First, I just wanted to point something out that everyone in the neighborhood lives with. When on Route 5, and you're going north on Route 5 and you're attempting to turn right onto Governor's Highway.
If you could just move the microphone in front of you.
And you attempt to turn right on Governor's Highway. You're often directly behind or in line behind a school bus, you know, I assume due to DATCO. Because the train tracks are so close to Route 5 on Governor's, when the buses turn right, they stop, they open their doors and they conduct their sound checks. Even current car and tractor-trailer traffic backs up awkwardly in the turn only lane. All right? And those buses often can't even get turned all the way to be parallel with Governor's Highway there. Sometimes at like a 45 degree angle. So because there's just so much bus traffic, and it's interesting, I came home from work at like 6 o'clock today, and even at 6 o'clock, there was a van, a carrying school children van that I was behind that did the exact same thing and that was at 6:30 because there's just so much bus traffic. So I guess my point is, that and the right turn lane only on Route 5 is rather short in comparison to other turn only, turn right only lanes on Route 5 such as the one right before Ellington. So the unique characteristics of that intersection, short distance between the train track and Route 5, the short, the short turn lane only and the established bus yard DATCO, it would be absolutely impossible to absorb without backing up that traffic into that right turn only, if you're going to dump this, you know, monster facility and most of the traffic coming from that facility is going to be coming from 291 going north on Route 5. That's going to back up on that right turn lane only and the back of it will go into the regular flow of traffic. And when they stop and, you know, listen and do their bus things, that's when the Route 5 is green and traffic will be, you know, flying down. So like, I mean, honestly, once you think of it, and we deal with it every day, we see it's an awkward term, even today because no one expects the vehicle in front of them to suddenly hit the brakes because they got to do that thing. They're like, oh, it's green light, they're going to turn right. So people, it's already an awkward, dangerous situation. It's a predictable hazard, so. So I just want to, okay, I guess, move on. I've got a few things, I'm not going to finish it all in three minutes, but I'll come back. I just want to move on to the town of South Windsor zoning regulations. I just want to say listed here, you know, on the cover, it says originally effective March 7, 1938. For perspective of this project, on March 7, 1938, this proposed 360,000 square foot building would have been by footprint, the largest single building on earth, only surpassed the following year by a German air hangar. All right? The structure is massive. This operation is massive. This is not something naturally placed so close to so many homes. There are residential zones on three sides of the site. You are being asked by the applicant to ignore the inescapable harm the constant noise, exhaust and traffic will do to our families, our children and the honest character of the town. My next section, I don't want to break up. I'm sure I'm approaching three minutes, so I'm going to step away and come back when... Is that appropriate? I'm just thinking that's the best for the group.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Go ahead, Tim.
Good evening. I appreciate that.
Excuse me, before you start your talk, we have one member of the people attending here that's been holding up material, which isn't being presented and it's very confusing for me to know how that fits into what's being presented. So I would ask that you only hold up material for us to look at when there's someone presenting that material. Thank you.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Believe me, I understand how difficult your job is. I want to talk about a little bit of history. When I moved to Governor's Highway, Governor's Highway didn't exist all the way down. It had a big hole in the middle. Governor's Highway ended at Newbury Road and there was farmers' fields between there and the warehouse. Many years ago, it was proposed to finish the hole in Governor's Highway long after the zoning was in place. And all the neighbors went to the town council at that time and complained. And the town council at that time passed the ordinance banning truck traffic. The town attorney at the time agreed that that was viable and I believe there was an $88 fine for it. And we felt that that was an agreement as the residents of Governor's Highway were making with the town of South Windsor, that that roadway would be completed, but the truck traffic would be forever banned from the residential part of Governor's Highway, which as you know, in most parts is very skinny. It's not a commercial type road, it's a residential type road. So now, as traffic is completed and we heard during an earlier public hearing that the town now felt that that ordinance wasn't enforceable, it's like a deal was made with the residents of Governor's Highway and now that's being broken. And in my way of thinking, that's wrong. We agreed years ago that we wouldn't object to the road being finished through that section with the understanding that there wouldn't be truck traffic in our neighborhood. Now that that's being done, as I said in an earlier presentation, it really makes this zoning nebulous in the sense that at the time, if that was the intent, the plan would have been different. The plan is changing, makes the requirements different, the playing field has changed. So that, and for this commission, I think it's important to understand that a deal was made. And the deal was made in good faith and that continuing that road would enable Governor's Highway to remain a residential street and not to be turned into a commercial neighborhood that happens to have houses on it. That's a different place, a different feel, and it's not what we bought into. We didn't buy into an industrial area that our houses happened to be on. We lived in a residential street, many of us bought before there was even any connection to the industrial area. So that this area being developed in this way when the road didn't continue, because one of the things we went for is we asked for the road to be closed at that point. I hope you'll bear with me for just another 30 seconds. So that, if we factor the history into that, I think it gives a different perspective here in the sense that what is the street going to become? And I think that it's not what many of us bought. And I think that's an obligation in many ways of the town to recognize that there was a deal, there was an arrangement, and we bought into something quite different. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi. I didn't sign in, is that all right?
Please do.
Yeah, I can sign in. I'll do that after. So I spoke to you last meeting, I just wanted to provide some...
If you could reintroduce yourself.
Yes, my name is Dane Matron, I live at 18 Edgewood Drive. So I gave some comments last time about the traffic report, I'm following up on that. We heard a little bit about some of the responses from the questions I had asked last time. So the first thing I want to ask is, I checked with the company that would be supplying the water for this site, MDC. They don't have any record of an application or inquiries for providing service to 25 Talbot Lane. So my question is, you know, has that been determined yet? And if not, why not? What is the availability and capacity for all of the utilities, not just for MDC? But if you're going to look at the water supply, is the correct amount of water pressure and capacity available for, let's say, a fire suppression system like a sprinkler system? So I think that needs to be determined. The next piece I want to go into here is, you know, last time I provided a bunch of comments, discrepancies I had noted in the traffic report. Now, I'm not a traffic engineer, I am an engineer, not a traffic engineer. And so I've been going through this with some of my fellow neighbors here and you're able to point out discrepancies as just sort of general laymen, right, that are reading through this report as best we can and we were able to note discrepancies. I have, I'm not going to go through them all here, I've outlined some of them in this document that I'll submit. Just one particular example, actually two, one being the crash data repository, right? What I'm trying to paint a picture of here is that the traffic report needs to have a third party verification, right? We can't just, you know, I can't go through this and provide how valid this report is or not and I think we need that third party verification. And I think for one example, that the crash data they had was wrong, right? It took a citizen to read through this and determine that their crash data repository was wrong. I think that's sort of unacceptable as an application. Another thing is, I have some things highlighted in the tables here when you're looking at the AM peak hour and PM peak hour. They are saying that the northbound turning lane onto Route 5 from Governor's Highway is a permissive and protected left-hand turn on a green light. That is not true. It is not a protected, you do not have a green arrow that allows you to turn onto Route 5. So I've highlighted some of that in here. So I think that's incorrect. Again, this is just basic stuff in the traffic report. They did not take into account the DATCO bus yards that were nearby. Um, they did not take into account the DATCO bus yards that were nearby when they were looking at the, uh, the, the, uh, overall impact. Um, I think that was a miss, right? They had to go back and look at that. My point here is, we need someone to come in and I, I spent many hours trying to look for a third party to verify. Now, no one wants to go up against Langin and provide an oppositional peer review because it's, it's occupational suicide, right? I, uh, was in contact with multiple people from different DOTs, um, they were not willing to testify, so instead I, I'm reading their comments as a non-expert. Um, I, I think it's, it's sort of ridiculous that we have to do this and, you know, these guys were saying, all right, you, we can do it for $300 an hour. We, we don't have that kinda cash, right? Uh, this is, these are a thorough, comprehensive study, I think we need someone to do that, um, sort of like what we did for the wetlands, we would look for support from the town on that. Um, again, spent many hours trying to find someone, they either are too expensive and/or they do not want to provide that, uh, that oppositional peer review, okay? Um, the last couple things here, um, let's see, yeah, okay, so, uh, one of the other things I was looking at on the report here is, um, in the revised ConDOT Highway Design Manual, you have to have a new intersection be spaced at least 400 feet apart in order to avoid short gaps between opposing T-intersections. I can't tell by the site plan if it's 400 feet from the Governor's Highway entrance and the Talbot Lane entrance. Um, so I would, I would ask if, if it meets that 400-foot criteria, as well as the other intersections that are, uh, nearby to the truck entrance. Um, last thing is, review of the 2014 amended South Windsor Plan of Conservation and Development, this is on page 41. Note several pockets of dedicated open space that reside within the proposed site plan, and, uh, how does the Town of South Windsor and the applicant plan to maintain those two areas of dedicated open space? Um, I have a screenshot here as well for that open space and green light plan. Um, so just in conclusion, um, I, I really think we need, uh, a third-party review in order to ensure this traffic assessment is thorough, uh, comprehensive, and, uh, and, you know, um, it's fair for the, for the people of the town to have something like that, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else who would, I have a lady in the back with her hand up, then after that, the gentleman with the pad in his hand?
Good evening, um, my name is Karen McLean, I live at 26 Edgewood Drive, and I'm Dane's next-door neighbor. Um, among a lot of the concerns people have, um, is the value of their homes, right? So, it's one thing to set, to be, you hear percentages thrown around, nobody really knows. But I started thinking, I, what do we even have here, right? In terms of value in the aggregate sense. So I spent a couple of days on Zillow, not being just nosy, and looked at two different scenarios. The first, market value, the Zillow estimate, at the current assessed value of the home, and how much we pay this year in property tax. So, within the 500-foot offset, there are 45 homes, either partially or entirely contained within that. They're on Governor's Highway, Cody Circle, Edgewood Drive, and one house on Maryland Road, that's my neighbor Anne, and she's an original owner of that home. So, according to Zillow's estimates right now, those 45 properties are currently worth $14.8 million, and the residents of those homes will pay $310,000 this year in property tax. Then I looked at the area beyond, which I called the nuisance zone, because I didn't know what else to call it, but it widens beyond the 500-foot offset to include Baker Lane, Cody Circle that was not within the 500 feet, Governor's Highway out to Ellington Road, Beldon Road, a portion of Hilton Drive, the remainder of Edgewood Drive, Elizabeth Street, and portions of Maryland Road, Ju- Judy Drive, and also Olive Barber Road. There's a lot more people that have concerns about this than, I'm being kind of conservative in identifying this area, second area. So, the second area contains another 103 homes, valued currently at $31.1 million, and who paid just over $650,000 of taxes this year. So, in this limited area, we have 148 homes, valued at close to $46 million, who paid over $960,000. No abatements for us, we pay up, right? For the 2021 year. In the event that these homes were to be devalued by, say, 10%, or each 10%, that would be a loss to us-
Are you-
-of our personal wealth-
Almost complete.
-of $4.6 million. And if you have additional questions, I can come back later, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Hi, John Howlizak, Cody Circle, I'm gonna go really fast. Okay, for the record, John Howlizak, Cody Circle, um, just wanted to show you our view of, of the site plan, and also direct your attention to 6.5.1, which, I'm sorry, section 4.5.1, um, of the Industrial Zone, South Windsor Zoning Regulations. The purpose of the industrial zone is to afford South Windsor areas reserved for industrial uses which constitute well-planned, functionally satisfying environments for prosperous industrial community and which, by design, are compatible with budding zones and uses. Okay? That's your regulation, I'm sorry to read it to you, I bet there's one or two people that wrote them, I, I mean no offense. Um, my wife and I had a, a recent appraisal done, uh, for insurance purposes. Uh, a local broker came out, he looked at the house, he gave us a price, and as he was leaving, um, we said, hey, could you just look at this site plan? And he took a look at the site plan, um, I think, that one there, and, uh, he said, wow, uh, maybe I should think about selling. And, uh, uh, he gave us this document, I'm gonna turn it in for the record, I'm just gonna read the punchline. Um, if the e-commerce warehouse is built, I believe the value of the property would decrease by $25,000 to $50,000, bringing the value down to, uh, $370,000. Submit for the record. When I look out my windows, I see the Clyburns, next door to me, across the street, the Bitners, uh, next to them, the Alawalias across the street from me. All four of these houses have not had a child in the school system for a decade. So each pair of houses, at about nine grand apiece in property taxes, support two school kids, okay? We're gonna be the first ones to start doing the tag sales and packing up and leaving, and then all of a sudden, all those empty bedrooms are going to fill back up again. Um, if there's time, you can ask the applicant's, uh, specialist whether his model even considers, uh, such a harsh use that will produce such a reaction in, uh, suddenly turning things over. And I've met other people on Edgewood that, uh, are also empty nesters, and they plan to move. So the sudden turnover of all these empty bedrooms, when we've been cash cows for a decade, is, is pretty significant. I'm gonna step down in interest of time. I have more stuff, plenty.
Thank you, John.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, thank you for this opportunity. William Grandin, 38, Elizabeth Street, Pleasant Valley Estates. Most of my comments, uh, regard, uh, are, in essence, a follow-up regarding, uh, public water and town sewer capacity. This, uh, commission approved a subdivision plan, filed, uh, map number 2268A, uh, approved on May 10th, 1994, and as conditions of that, uh, conditions of that approval, the, um, all lots shall be serviced by the Town of South Windsor Sanitary Sewer System and are subject to the approval of the Water Pollution Control Authority. Number four, public water shall be supplied to the subdivision. So, um, that was conditions for this subdivision plan, uh, which comprises the bulk of this proposed development, uh, 26 acres approximately. The applicant's utility plan, uh, CUT1, notes that the contractor to coordinate with MDC and the town fire department. Under the water service notes, final water and fire sizes to be determined by Fire Protection MEP, Mechanical, Electrical, and Plumbing Consultant, in coordination with the MDC. Under standard water main notes, number 11, test pressure shall be 150 PSI as confirmed by the MDC. Number 13, hydrant locations are to, subject to the approval of the town fire marshal. Number 32, individual permits for domestic and fire services and hydrants shall be obtained at the MDC Utility Services. So I do not find where the applicant addresses the, um, uh, approval notations for, uh, capacity for, for service of water and sewer, uh, on, uh, water under this. I spoke with the MDC, they say that an application for availability and capacity had not been filed as of today. The commission, the MDC, needs, uh, for Fire Marshal Walter Summers to weigh in. He has to specify requirements for fire suppression. The fire marshal, uh, would require such information as the building plan, the racking plan, and inventory. So, uh, the inventory is particularly important, it'd be due to flammability, so if you have concrete that you're storing in there, it's a little less flammable than lumber, let's And with these types of items and, uh, other information from the developer in the application, the MDC then runs a model to see if there's enough capacity in the system in the event of a fire, to service a fire. I spoke with, uh, now regarding the sewer, spoke with Anthony Manfree, uh, Town of South Windsor Sewer Department. Uh, no application for availability and capacity has been filed with, uh, with him. He has not seen a plan, he has no discharge information from the facility. He does not know, uh, if, uh, without the discharge information, doesn't know if, uh, the pump station capacity, uh, would be exceeded. So the commission doesn't have sufficient evidence for capacity in either water or
Okay. Thank you, Wayne, if you have additional, uh, information, um, we'll have you come back Gentleman on the end?
Good evening to the commission, thanks for your time. I've got some public comments to make first, and then I'll-
If you could speak into the microphone.
My name is Derek Butler from 596 Governor's Highway, I do have some public statements to make, and then I will have intervenor information, um, during that segment. Uh, I would like to provide you with my resume. I've got 40-plus years in the freight trucking, warehouse, and distribution business. Um, and I'd like to highlight, like, some safety concerns, because I know our business, right? I know what the, the, the issues and the safety problems that, that, that we bring. So, I'm listening to a lot of the comments, you know, in a couple of weeks, we've reduced our, our, our truck volume from 570 to 209, um, units a day. Um, 209 units, 119 parking spaces, 54 loading docks, it just spells backlog, right? The site doesn't have enough room for staging or queuing up trucks, trailers, right? So, wanted to try and give you an idea of how my industry works, how our industry works. So, you've got, you could have 20, 30 appointments in the morning for unloading, you know, those guys come in the night before, they don't wanna be late or risk missing, missing their appointment, or being shut down with a log issue. So you've got a good portion of the next day's freight coming in that arrives the night before. Likewise, on the outbound side, drivers load up or empty out, but then they have to wait for their orders and assignments, right? So they don't just back into a dock and leave. They wait before they go in, they unload, they wait for their orders for the next pickup. So, you know, at any given time, you're talking a backlog which will create congestion on the street. So what I wanted to try to do tonight is give a visual of what 10, 70 to 75-foot-long, eight-and-a-half-foot-wide tractor-trailer units would look like in the surrounding road structure. It's just not built, not made for, there's not enough room, right? You can't have one truck waiting staged on one side of Governor's Highway with another passing to get into the site, and with car traffic, there's no room, it's a safety hazard, it's dangerous. And you're not talking about five or 10 units a day, you're, you know, well, we're down now from 570, but we're at 209 with-
Could you bring that exhibit closer, please?
With 15% coming between 7:00 PM and 6:00 AM in the morning.
Okay, um-
I will circle back, because I do have intervenor comments, and then I'll, I'll have more additional with safety concerns as well. If they can have that.
Um, well, why don't we pass that around to the commissioners, if you would, please? Thank you.
Yes, so, it's showing, if it's been showing on our red tractor, it's white trailer-
Um, excuse me, uh, we can't get it on the record, what you're saying, if you're not at the microphone. Derek, if you have intervenor comments, um, now would be a great time for you to-
Sure, thank you, and I'll try and be brief. So I pulled up some information, um, in regards to health and safety. I heard it mentioned earlier, um, and I've got copies I'm gonna provide, so I don't have to go over all of it tonight. But the California EPA, several years ago, put out an air quality and land use handbook, right? And they used this handbook, um, to determine, and help with decisions for future land use in regards to truck terminals and distribution centers, okay? They found that truck terminals, distribution centers, create high concentrations of diesel PM, cancer-causing. They found that the risk, cancer risk is great in that separation between a neighborhood and the operation, the trucking operation, the cancer risk, they list as, uh, cancer risk of 100 per million, okay? They're saying that when- They're saying that when you have separation from neighborhood and the trucking facility of 1,000 feet or more, and they suggest 1,000 feet or more in their decision-making process, it reduces the risk to less than 10 per million with that 1,000-foot separation. I wanted to bring that up, I'm going to leave this, I've got 10 copies, I've got a copy of the air quality manual as an exhibit also, because there are so many houses that are within 400 feet. California, they're suggesting 1,000-feet buffer, 3,000 feet is ideal. So wanted to make sure I got that into the exhibit for tonight. Once again, also, the, this definition that we're going back and forth on, so I've ran distribution centers, warehouses, and terminals, okay? And just to make sure that we're all aware, the building as designed, originally was cross-docks operation, docks on both sides, but they were kind of made to put all 54 doors on one side. It's a building that accommodates high truck traffic, high trailer usage, transfer of shipments inbound and outbound from different modes. When I say modes, it could be from a container. Different mode for us in my business is line haul is different than local, right? So you've got long haul equipment, those are the big 53-footers, eight-and-a-half feet wide, bring merchandise region to region, and then you've got the outbound stuff, which is smaller to get in and out of city streets and that sort of thing. So, you know, those are different modes, but the building as designed promotes high volume, high freight transfer, merchandise in and out. In the middle of that, yes, you can sort, pick, pull, stamp, label, tag, inventory, co-mingle, break down, whatever you want to call it, but the building by design is designed to handle freight traffic in the arena of a freight terminal, right? Can you distribute a little bit out of it? Yep. Can you hold some things long-term? But they should have to present that special exception, because that as design is a freight terminal, that's all I have.
Thank you, Derek. Are there any other intervenors that would like to speak?
Hi, I'm Karen McKlintz, I'm an intervenor and direct abutter. We submitted exhibits back on November 4th, but accidentally left out the 13 copies of one item, but it was filed electronically. Would I be able to pass that in right now?
Yes, please.
Okay, great, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak against or have questions or concerns? Gentlemen in the vest?
The green vest? I'm John Hapkowitz, 44 Cody Circle. I am an intervenor. I won't repeat a lot of the information that was already presented today, those were, people before me grabbed all my notes here, but I just wanted to confirm from Wednesday, we submitted to Caitlin a package, and it included an environmental impact issue with the effects on clustered sedges on the property. I don't think it was properly addressed previously, so you've received that and have read it into record.
Okay.
That is, okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak who hasn't spoken yet? Is there anyone who didn't get to finish what they were saying before that would like a chance to speak again?
Another three-minute interval, I just call your attention to Section 6 of your Planning and Zoning Regulations, 6.4.4 subsection I, that a perimeter road is required whenever you have parking of over 200 spaces. Certainly, maybe there's an aisleway around the existing parking lot of the application, but I think with this large tractor-trailer traffic, whether it's 200 or 500, I don't know, it keeps changing, I think you need a way to queue on the site so that you're not queuing on Nutmeg Road. And this is what your zoning regulations say, subsection I, you know, you would think there would be a serious perimeter road around the entire tractor-trailer area and vehicle parking area, so that the tractor-trailers can queue up on the site and not clog up Nutmeg Road and surrounding areas. Thank you.
William Grandin, 38 Elizabeth Street. So again, back to the plan, there's a note from the commission to the applicant, which also says, for a condition of approval, that the applicant should show the abandoned remains of Newberry Road on the plan. And I would suggest to the commission that that be shown as well currently, and for the applicant to demonstrate that it was properly abandoned, the Newberry, remains of the Newberry Road. As you're on Governor's Highway, you can see the barrier is there, concrete curtsy barrier, overgrown, but it's there. And then finally, from, a deed from the Towns Land Records, 16, volume 1616, page 318, where the French Social Circle Building Association Incorporated deems the property to hail realty, said premises are conveyed subject to, including but not limited to buyers' obligation to maintain a walking trail and detention basins and such. There is a drawing that shows on Talbot, I believe it's Lot 5, where a walking trail's supposed to go from Talbot through to Connecticut Avenue. So that's something that may need to be shown somewhere, so I submit that.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to complete their previous testimony? Who hasn't spoken twice already?
Steve Gretsch, where am I, 155 Judy Lane. Tried to get as much out as I could before, I just want to concur with some of the things I've heard tonight. My organization currently operates 200 facilities this size nationally, all of them are freight distribution or mail distribution. We operate into the 34,000 smaller facilities. Of the 200 facilities we operate, none are within 50 feet of residential. Because we have done testing, safety concerns, health concerns, all the way through, and that's the federal government as well.
My apologies for pointing out your own regulations to you, but 6.4.8 off-street loading, just going to hit the highlights, loading docks and receiving areas shall be designed as an integral part of the building and/or adequately screened, such that these areas do not adversely impact the site. Point number two, the tail end there, the loading docks shall not cause undue noise or visceral disruption. We actually have four veterans of foreign wars within about two football fields, about 600 feet of this facility, representing all four of the most recent wars that the country has fought in. The noise and visceral disruption is something that upsets me, because it could upset them. Sufficient onsite vehicle maneuvering area must be provided. Trucks destined to or coming from loading docks shall not require maneuvering movements within the public highway. Truck maneuvers on streets drives other than entering and exiting are not permitted. And where lots abut a residential or rural zone, loading docks shall not face said zone or use. Face has different means, okay? This is a box with doors on it. They didn't contour the box around the doors to kind of screen them even more from the residences. I could go on a little bit about buffers. I know the Aldi's Warehouse on Rice Street, some local politicians have pointed out to me, hey, you know, the McGrath Road people had to put up with that. I took a look at the aerial photographs of that, and the buffers, well, it's not really a buffer, but there's a green space between McGrath Road and Aldi's on the order of 900 to 1,200 feet, depending on where you measure from. My neighbors are getting 50 feet, and in some cases, not even that. The 50 feet that has been given by the applicant to the neighbors, I think may be a tacit admission that the 50 feet that's supposed to be built on the residential side by the developer, the residential developers, often cases was never built. That's, you know, been shown in other planning and zoning matters here before the town. The 50-foot of trees doesn't actually exist on 75 Cody Circle. The lot there went pretty far back, the applicant's own tree lines don't show for 2136P that there are trees all the way across the back there, so there are no 50 feet of trees. What you see at the back of 75 Cody is further onto the property. What I'd like to suggest, you know, should you attempt to buffer this thing, is that you consider giving us more existing trees, you could provide a greenway connector between 75 Cody Circle and the town-owned open space on Edgewood Drive. That would preserve one of the two anti-aircraft gun sites that David Mills has detailed to you. There's actually a foundation out there, you can see it on the state's LIDAR system, which was one of the ammo shacks. So if we had 200 feet of trees, I'm just throwing a number out there, it would be better. You also have a unique opportunity with these two town-owned open spaces, they aren't fully treed. The trees on 75 Cody Circle, they've only been growing there for maybe five years or 10 years, and there's a lot of empty space where there aren't any trees. A licensed arborist could come back with heavy-duty planting equipment and put 16-foot trees in some of those town-owned open spaces. In addition, for buffering, if you take a ride across the river to the riverfront recapture, and you take a walk along the river, you can see modified riprap holding back the sides of the upper parts there. You could put very tall buffers around this thing with a 10-foot sound fence on top. Maybe that helps, but frankly, there's just seem to be so many other troubling issues with this application that I just, I just don't see how you get there. Thank you for your time tonight, I do appreciate what you all do.
Thank you, John. A gentleman back with the beard, do you have additional testimony you'd like to share?
Richard Delay, 95 Cody Circle. We are here tonight for one reason, a reason promoted by the applicant's funded Municipal Fiscal Impact Analysis, even referenced it tonight. It claims that after the smoke clears, this project will net the Town of South Windsor an annual estimated fiscal impact of $563,000. I remind you, there has never been a single mega warehouse plunged this deep into a dense residential area in the history of this state. If there was a $100 million net benefit, communities would still reject it due to the unacceptable harm to health and quality of life. But 169 towns, isn't one experiencing a financial hardship? Isn't one of them greedy? No town has ever taken this path, because when they looked at the complete financial picture of any project which so broadly disrupts abutting neighborhoods, the unintended financial consequences offset too much of any theoretical gain. $563,000 is a fantasy that will never materialize. I am providing more detailed analysis of the economic report, but in order to not spend 30 minutes on this, I will briefly spike out some relevant points. First, the report states that the South Windsor Assessor will eventually utilize the income approach to valuing the property. However, the report was produced prior to the significant changes to the site, the same changes Mr. DiMali stated right here would significantly reduce the competitive position of the facility in the market. Therefore, this would reduce the estimated eventual value of the property, and in turn, the estimated property taxes. We just estimated that reduction as a conservative 5%. Secondly, the 2012 study published by the American Farmland Trust and Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, which the author cites for using the 27% of taxes to estimate the town expenditures for the property, simply averaged nine separate earlier studies of individual towns. These towns are not representative of South Windsor, as all nine have smaller populations, only two of the nine towns even have a police department. Towns this small would not accurately reflect similar services which South Windsor provide.
Excuse me, Rich. I'm willing to let you speak more if the rest of the public has already spoken. Is there anyone else from the public who would like an opportunity to speak tonight? Hearing?
Yeah.
One more?
Just real quickly, I have a letter here detailing concerns I have about such large construction down into the water table, and how it will affect the foundations, most personally my own, but also my other neighbors, in terms of, you know, we had a structure that was 24 times smaller that was built in the neighborhood, the windows shook and rattled for about a week. This is 24 times larger, and the ponds are being dug down into the water table within 500 feet, so, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Rich Delay again. Said only two of the nine towns even have a police department. Towns this small would not accurately reflect similar services which South Windsor provide. Only one of the towns is include, included in the study does, which is Farmington, which according to the study has a general government services figure of about 32%. So if 32% is used for the town's annual expected expenditures, then that amount increases in 5% to 234,000. Thirdly, their analysis doesn't even acknowledge there would be a reduction in surrounding property values and the corresponding real estate tax flow. I think it's somewhat insightful of the priorities the neighborhood has when they don't even, to them, but when they don't even include them in the analysis. It's an afterthought, all right? The neighborhood, clearly, the neighborhood outrage contradicts this assumption, as there's broad negative impact for residential neighbors, and to a lesser extent, the industrial neighbors. I don't care about the property values, but you guys should. Through our research and public tax records, we found that there are 17 residential direct abutters, 54 residential 500-footer abutters, 175 residential 1,000 abutters, 1,000-foot abutters, 186 residential 1,500-foot abutters, whose total 2020 real estate taxes paid was about 1.172 million. On the industrial side, there were five industrial direct abutters, 25 industrial 500-foot abutters, 38 industrial 1,000-foot abutters, and 50 industrial 1,500-foot abutters, whose total 2020 real estate taxes paid were 1.152 million. When estimating staggered impact ranging from a high of a drop of 12% from the direct the direct abutters, the direct residential abutters, which is a conservative figure, all the way to no drop at all to industrial property values among industrial fifteen-hundred footers, we calculated basically an annual, a conservative annual drop in a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars in current surrounding real estate taxes. Lastly, our neighborhood is almost exclusively owner-occupied. It's the reason why people are showing up here today. Like, it is difficult to find a property rented. But lower property values and the stark drop in neighborhood desirability from this, you know, catastrophe will trigger a conversion of some of the properties to rentals. And these are discussions people are already having, like, you know, when this came out and we started knocking on doors, we got, like, the knee-jerk reaction was to put up a sign and try to sell the house, all right? And we were able to talk every single person out of it beside one because they had faith in the independence of this commission. Like, they know the history of independence in here, and, you know, they decided to put their faith in that, and the right thing will be done. Most towns strategize how to increase owner occupancy rates. The lever in front of you, in the form of this development, does the exact opposite. Owner-occupied houses contain families in all stages of life, as you can see, of all different ages and families, with many with older, many older without school-age children. When a single-family rental houses in, uh, single-family rental houses in South Windsor attract one profile, families looking to get their children into outstanding South Windsor school system. It is common sense to anyone who lives here that the average South Windsor single-family rental has more school-age children than the average owner-occupied single-family home. We've estimated that ten percent would eventually convert to rentals and have an average of, we came up with eight, or point eight-nine more school-age children per house, resulting in a total of sixteen more students per, sixteen more students and their associated cost. There will absolutely be more kids in our school from this project, and this, and this calculation is deliberately excu, including what John had referenced, the, uh, the predictable temporary spike in schoolchildren when the turnover of the immediate, you know, resident Exodus, just is going to be an immediate turnover if this ever got approved. This is a long-term, like, figures. That is more of a temporary, one-time thing. We've included details on every house within the fifteen-hundred feet of the site in our documents, which they said were the conservative estimate. And if you think we overestimated, let me remind you the scale of this development. From my property line, the, on average, the sun will set twenty-one minutes and thirty se, thirty-six seconds earlier every day than it does now. You guys understand that? The scope of this? We estimated, so after our deductions and corrections, we estimated the net municipal gain would be ninety-seven thousand seven hundred dollars. Is ninety-seven thousand dollars enough for the town to sell its soul? I don't think a hundred million is, but everyone would agree ninety-seven thousand isn't. Even if one says the loss in taxes or the cost of new students is half the predicted amount, it still demonstrates the five hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar net increase is a mirage, a mirage that hasn't tricked any town. I implore South Windsor not to be the first. I also want to remind everyone that only eight months ago, South Windsor proposed a building, to build a three-point-nine million dollar football field and purchase, and attempted to purchase a second town hall. So it would be disingenuous for anyone to imply financial hardship or to forward the idea that we might have to raise taxes if we don't develop a plot of land which has sat undeveloped since the town was founded. Along with this minimum, minimal financial benefit, there is no community benefit of this project, unless you mean bringing to, into South Windsor another three hundred exploitive warehouse associate jobs, which by even the applicant's report, would leave a working family, depending on their size, just above at or below the poverty line. It's in the report, their report. "The long-term effect of abandoning a diverse portfolio of occupations in town and fostering such a high concentration of such jobs in a town is a question that hasn't even been asked, let alone answered." All right? "The fact that the noise is excluded from any ordinance and the town police stress the tractor-trailers can and will take right from Talbot onto governors without any consequences, this is a disaster in the making, not to mention the scores of other factors which provides this commission a bulletproof denial. We are not asking you to be the most pro-resident planning and zoning commission in the state. We are just asking you not to be the least." My wife had submitted a letter, which wasn't read in entirety, so I'm just going to do Said the, the site, this was the one that had the Carlos Pasta and diesel pollutants reference, so. "The site's fume, the site's diesel fumes and pollution will become a participant in abutting residents' daily lives and will be inhaled by the lungs of our children every day, all day. Not only neighborhood families will be breathing these fumes from an unnatural proximity to hundreds of diesel trucks, but the site abuts two town open space lots explicitly to be used for, among other things, active and passive recreation. These open space lots are currently enjoyed by our neighborhood children. As a parent," said I'm the parent, "of medically fragile, of a medically fragile eleven-year-old," which is referencing the letters. "My last letter detailed the harm the piercing diesel engine, jake break, and backup alarm noise will have on her as a legally blind child, but that is, but that is only a portion of the trauma this project will inflict. Our daughter, due to her significant complex congenital conditions, also has restrictive lung disease and asthma. When well, she requires a sixty-minute treatment every single day from a positive pressure respiratory machine when nebulizing medication. If not well, she requires four of these one-hour daily treatments. She does not have a swallow gag or cough reflex, and while her oxygen levels are monitored twenty-four-seven, she often requires supplemental oxygen. I am sharing this to demonstrate that her medical fragility extends to her lungs and breathing. It is common sense that the abutting site's diesel fumes and degraded air quality will be impactful on her health and quality of life. I remind you, her medical complexities force her to spend ninety-nine percent of her life, including her public schooling, on our property, the abutting property. I've included a picture of her in her backyard wheelchair swing in the exact location where, if this project is approved, her senses and health will be assaulted by noise and diesel fumes. I have also included a two thousand and eighteen photo of one of the two blind child area signs which were installed by the town on Cody Circle two years prior to the applicant's purchase of the property. We look forward to supporting an appropriately sized project at this site. The pain and damage this misplaced project will cause our neighborhood and my daughter is real. It is not a number in a bank account or a line in a town annual report that you will be remembered for this decision, but how your actions affected the most vulnerable." Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we have commissioners, and I'm hoping your summation will go after the commissioners. Okay, so I'll turn to Commissioner Cavignaro for questions.
I would first like to start out by thanking everyone for coming out tonight and previous meetings for not only this application, but all others. It does mean a lot. I will start off with a question for, I believe I wrote this down, I think, two hours ago. For Mr. Blanco, if I'm correct, he clarified that there would be fifty-two hundred cars going through Governor's Highway a day. Is that still correct? Because I'm just curious if, how many of those will be for, for, for trucks, if you have the more specifics on that?
So what I meant to, oh, good evening. So what I meant to say that currently on Governor's Highway, from data from Connecticut, there's around fifty-two hundred vehicles in, on a daily basis, on average, in a year along Governor's Highway in between Route Five and Route Thirty. It's not that the project is generating that traffic. It's traffic already exists on Governor's Highway.
Okay. So what I was just curious about is of those fifty-two hundred of, if you knew the specifics of, if they were trucks, and, and again, I'm not sure if you'll, you'll have the specifics.
Yeah, that data is not available on, on CT regarding, like, on a daily basis, but our traffic counts that we collected did differentiate trucks and cars.
Okay. So that's the only question I have. I'll, I'll further go on to everything else I have to say. I'm a visual person. I'll, I'll do a quick story for, for what I'm going to introduce. So for everyone that spoke tonight, I completely understand. You know, there's people that move into South Windsor to, to start a new life, people who've lived on Governor's Highway, or Cody Circle, or Edgewood, that probably lived in South Windsor longer than I've been alive, and I completely understand that, to, to start a family, to start a life. They invest in their homes, whether that be renovating their kitchen, or doing their back deck, or repaving their, their driveway. I completely understand. You invest in your, your home, and the value of it is, it's concerning, and a single warehouse could fracture that. And not only that, but it, it could also be fractured through the health, health risk that this warehouse does present itself, which I think is underlooked in this. Uh, you know, we heard from Carlos Pasta as well, and from frankly, everyone else in the audience tonight, on the health risk of this warehouse, which I, I think was mentioned earlier, a century ago would be one of the biggest, just quoting that out from someone else. But besides that, the decibel level still remain a concern, and the fact that we still don't have a tenant for this, or a known tenant for this application, is still quite a concern. So I'm just gonna leave that there. I would love to see more information on any potential health risks. I know prior commissioners in the last meeting that I was not present at, mentioned road erosion. As we do know, and as we saw the video, that there are trucks that will drive through the portion of Governor's Highway as they shouldn't. Um, you know, I, I went down to Governor's Highway one day, and I noticed it firsthand, and I know our chairman mentioned it a couple of meetings ago, that he saw it firsthand as well. So I, I'm concerned with road erosion as well for that. Besides all that, I, I will finish on a positive. I, I thank the effort put into this application to try and provide more details for us to make more thorough decisions. That is not overlooked, and I will say thank you for that, and thank you to the interveners and everyone else in the public for coming out to make sure we make a more informed and thorough decision. That is all I have to say. Thank you.
Commissioner Vettiri.
Thank you, and thank, again, I, I repeat what Alan has just said, and thank all of you for your time and, and for the thoughtfulness that's gone into this. As my first meeting, I must admit this was a eye-opening experience for hearing both sides of, of a very emotional project. Uh, you know, just a couple of questions. You know, I know that there is no tenant identified, and I know that there is specific amounts of truck traffic being generated. Curious as to what those numbers represent, since we don't know who the tenant's going to be, we don't know if it's going to be somebody just using it as a, as a storage facility, or if there will be more traffic, less traffic. Just curious about the number, but the reason why I'm curious about the number is, I saw from Langin's report that they talked about the work that's been done on Governor's Highway and, and to, between Talbot Lane and Route Five, that's bolstered the road. What about Talbot Lane itself? If it's going to be handling this many more trucks? I didn't see anything talking about Talbot's ability to handle this increased flow of traffic, this increased flow of especially truck traffic. So given that, you know, the number of trucks, even if it's two hundred and nine, if it's, others were talking about significantly higher numbers, I, I do have a concern that that had, if that's been addressed, I certainly have not heard it being addressed. Beyond that, you know, to, to hear a lot of the concerns, as Alan said, I understand the concerns, I, I understand as a homeowner, the concerns, but again, I also understand, you know, the, the desire to, to continue to increase the presence of, of all sorts of longstanding projects within South Windsor. Uh, so, you know, there's a lot to think about and a lot to talk about, but that, that was my only specific question.
So Bob, would you like to address that question to a particular individual at this time? I don't know if it would be Ben Wheeler or Peter DiMali?
I would, Peter would be the one that I would probably at least ask the question of. I, I don't know if...
And I believe the question is, how do you come about the numbers? What's your source?
The numbers of truck traffic, that's ITE, Institute of Transportation Engineers and, and maximum...
Excuse me. He has the floor.
Okay, so he should, or Traffic Engineer should address that. He did the study. What the methodology is to arrive at those numbers, those numbers are based on national information. And this would, all Traffic Engineers that I have ever seen use ITE information for traffic generation, so.
Okay, if you would like your...
Yes, please.
If he has additional information.
So yes, like Peter mentioned, basically, the Institute of Traffic Engineers, they publish what they call the trip generation manual, and it's updated every certain time. And basically, they up, they collect data on different type of uses and different type of facilities, and they have land, they have categories of each land use, and they'll give you per square feet, rate of the daily trips, the morning pick hour trips, and the afternoon pick hour trips, basically. As well, recently, I would say four years ago, they started differentiating trucks from vehicles, and that's how we came up with a number of two hundred and nine vehicles on a daily basis. Yes, the development itself will generate more traffic, but it's just the tra, truck traffic will be two hundred and nine. We still generate another type of vehicles, like regular cars, because the facility will have regular employees, that's why we're providing plenty of parking for regular car spaces, but those are the numbers specifically for trucks.
Okay, I guess, yeah, I, I'm familiar with the, with the research you're talking about, it's just that, you know, an Amazon facility would have so many more trucks in a facility this size than maybe Coke would have in a given day or something like that, so I wasn't sure which conclusion, since you have no idea what the tenant would be, which way you were leaning toward to come up with your number.
Correct. It, it's because we don't have any tenant available. Right now, we are using the most conservative. It's not a regular warehouse that we are using for the land use. It's a distribution center warehouse, and that's what we use.
Okay. Thank you. You have said, Bob? Okay. Commissioner Dexter.
Michelle, is there any evidence that still exists with this agreement with the Governor's Highway residents before it was sent, the road was sent through? I mean, is...
I, I honestly heard of it for the first time tonight from...
All right, is that something we can...
I, I can certainly see if there's any information...
The town clerk might have something, or...
Um, I, I can present, I know one question that came up tonight was about the abandonment of Newberry Road.
Yes.
And I do have council minutes of that abandonment, and that was done, I believe, back in the eighties, so.
Okay.
That I can provide you information with, but the other I'd have to research.
All right, well, I know you're busy, but I think...
I'll see what I can find.
I think it would help a little. The other thing is, Jeff, I'm still not confident about this Newberry Road... The other thing is, Jeff, I'm still not confident about this Newberry Road culvert and the water. And I'm just not confident about it.
So there's two, two things to that, two sides to that question. One, the development of this facility as designed meets all the standards. They're detaining all these storms up there and including the Hundred Year Storm onsite, so they're not increasing the amount of stormwater that leaves the site. Okay, it will, it will percolate out at a slower rate and it will be more lengthy of a flow, but they're not increasing the flow off the site. And it does go through several other detention basins before it gets to Newberry Brook. So that's one thing. They're not increasing the stormwater flow off the site. Every other facility in town is designed in a similar manner and has worked. The second thing is, Newberry Brook is, floods down alongside Newberry Road before it gets to Main Street. That's where it flooded this year. It's very constrained right there. It's physically constrained by the road on one side and embankment on the other side. It's a very small brook. So when there's an excess amount of water, it has no place to go but to flood the road. And that is a different item, it's a different issue, not related to this application. It's something that would take a little bit of, a fair amount of research to try and figure out how to resolve because, as I said, it's constrained by the road and an embankment on the other side.
Well, I'm sure it's on your radar now.
Yes.
Then I just had maybe one more question about, and Peter, I'm not sure if you addressed it. Excuse me, but we talked at the very beginning about bituminous or gravel walkway out in front on Governor's Highway is, if that's part of our approval conditions, are we on board with that?
Give me a moment. We, we took under advisement that suggestion and we've looked at it. And we can grade for a future sidewalk along our frontage readily. Your plan of conservation development, your sidewalk plan, doesn't show anything in that area, as you know.
And I'm not asking for a sidewalk, just...
Yeah, yeah, we can grade for a future sidewalk. There's a big gap between the, the only sidewalks in the area really are for Belden Estate subdivision and Baker Lane is the closest. So it's quite a distance away and there's nothing to the west, if I recall correctly, in the whole industrial area. I don't think there are any sidewalks whatsoever. I don't think there are any on Nutmeg Road North, any on Nutmeg Road South, none on Governor's Highway. There's nothing in the area. So if we, if we built one, we don't think that's prudent to do and it would be a waste of money. So we can grade for it and we can readily do that. So it can accommodate a future sidewalk if the town decides, hey, we wanna connect all along in there and put sidewalks throughout that whole development. As you know, people, if you've gone through that development, I used to have offices in there on Governor's Highway and also, in fact, just down the street and also in South Satellite Road. That general area, a lot of people go out for a walk during their coffee break, during lunch break, that type of thing. They're walking on the street. They're probably, you know, consideration should be given. The question is prioritization of that over other areas of town that may need sidewalks. And that's what your plan does. It prioritizes and it's not on the priority listing at all.
So your answer is no, right?
Four sidewalks, that's correct, but we will grade for it.
You'll grade for some sort of pathway where people could get off the street?
Well, we, we looked at it from perspective of your new standard is not a four-foot, but you've increased it to a five-foot sidewalk. We can readily accommodate that in grading. That's not a problem at all.
Okay, thank you. One more question.
Yep.
Peter, probably for you. I'm just curious. All the approvals are done, all the permits are obtained and you are ready to go. Do you break ground before you know who the tenant is? Or do you then really get serious about signing one on? What's, what's the process?
Well, we, as we've testified, we cannot negotiate our clients, cannot seriously negotiate with any clients whatsoever until you can say, hey, we can deliver a building by X date.
Right.
There's no point. They, they can, you can take a great risk and do a speculative building without that. But the major factor is what are you going to do in terms of a tenant? And you can't even negotiate with them at this point. That's the marketplace.
Well, that's kind of why I preference it, you know, once all the approvals and permits were done.
Once all the, once we've gone through entitlement process, which was the local and state permits, and there are many. We've received some already and we have more to go. Once we have that and we know when they're gonna be all done, then, and we can anticipate how long it will take to build it, then we can start negotiating with them.
I have a follow-up. That's kind of what I'm getting to. So you, you're talking to a tenant and they're all excited, it's a best site, but they don't need fifty-four dock doors, they don't need three-hundred-and-sixty thousand square feet. Do you say goodbye tenant because that's what we're building? Or do you say something smaller is okay and we can come back and do a change order? I mean, what, what, yeah, I know, smiling, but it's important.
It's not unusual for there to be requested changes by a tenant.
Right.
We've seen it recently.
Yes, we have.
You've approved sites and they had little changes. They weren't major, but they had to return to the commission for that. So if someone comes in and says they want fewer loading docks, then they can... We have a lot of, you know, warehouse storage within this facility, it's three-hundred-and-sixty thousand square feet. It's designed for a lot of storage. If they wanna have fewer loading docks, they can have that.
Okay.
You know, if they want other changes, like, for example, and we represented this to you previously, we don't think they're gonna want this much of vehicle parking for employees. We think that's a large number, but that's in your zoning regulations, we're conforming to the zoning regulations. If they don't need less, if they need less, we can return to you and ask for a waiver so that we can either put it in reserve or, and not build it, or just permanently do away with that. We can ask for that, but we'd have to come back to you for that. We have to ask for permission for those changes.
I get it, yep.
It's all, it's all, all through the purview.
I'm just kind of setting, setting the stage for everybody here that, you know, this may not be the end-all-to-be-all, that it all depends on what happens.
Yeah, a lot of these things are tenant-driven and negotiated and, and, you know, sometimes, you know, could be, you know, a smaller building. We don't know. But we're not anticipating that. We're designing for this building. We think that's the marketplace, but there's a possibility. And if so, we have to return to you. If it's a smaller building, it's easier for you to approve that than if we wanna enlarge it. And as we said before, under your regulations, we could have a bigger building and we're not.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When I look at a situation like this, I kind of figure that whichever way we decide, we have to anticipate that there will be a court case.
What was that last word?
And I'm not actually talking to you directly. You might as well have a seat because I'm gonna ask questions to other people first.
Okay.
Thank you. I will get, I'll get back. So I, I think we have to look at what does the law allow us to do and as we best understand the law, and none of us, I think, are attorneys. So we'll listen to attorneys from both sides and appreciate that input. So I've got a couple of things I'd like to do. First, I'd like to look at this question of whether it's a terminal, a freight terminal or a distribution center or a warehouse. So maybe, this is an application for a warehouse and distribution center? And you're nodding your head and that's, thank you, okay. Merriam-Webster says a terminal is the end of a carrier line having facilities for handling of freight and passengers. A freight or passenger station that is central to a considerable area and serves as a junction at any point with other lines. So that's the definition of terminal. Now, it didn't have the word freight in it. I looked up on the internet, there's a book called The Geography of Transport Systems by Jean-Paul Rodriguez from New York, or published by Rootledge. And it gives both graphical and text definitions, you know, that try to distinguish between the two types of facilities. So it talks about distribution facilities. These facilities are more based on the concept of throughput of inventory they carry, implying a much higher level of integration with supply chains. For instance, a distribution center temporarily holds the inventory for a market area it services, implying that some storage will take place. And on occasion, like manufacturing activities, and it mentions several types. And then the main purpose is its ability to fill a variety of orders in a timely fashion. Terminal facility, they define as freight facilities outside their standard. Well, they imply they have a standard role of transferring cargo from one mode to another. And we did hear testimony that, you know, this might be an interstate mode to a local mode versus like what I see at Home Depot where we see trains coming in and trucks going out. To me, that Home Depot is really a terminal by that definition. Is this a terminal? Could be, or it could be interpreted as a distribution center. FreightCenter.com defines a freight terminal, doesn't define a distribution center. A freight terminal is a connecting facility where shipments are transferred, trucks are switched. Terminals can include trucking terminals, railroad terminals, airports and seaports. So again, the idea that you can have a trucking terminal be interpreted as a freight terminal. SupplyChainMinded.com, a distribution center apart from storing products offers value-added services like product mixing, order fulfillment, cross-docking and packaging. So this is, we heard testimony that cross-docking is another word for freight terminal. SupplyChain.com, and it says cross-docking is really a distribution center. So my, I guess my point is that the distinction between these two things is rather vague. There's degrees of storage and degrees of, you know, how much we're changing modes. So, you know, if we make a judgment that this is a freight terminal, that's certainly gonna be something that will be argued in court. That said, if we do decide as a, as a commission that this is a freight terminal, there are several aspects of the special exception that would prevent us from approving this application. Not the least of which is, it says there should be no impact on local property values. And I'm convinced of what we've heard here that there's potentially a substantial impact on local property values. I did see the, the intervener provided, which I haven't seen displayed here, but pictures and videos of bald eagles and bats. I thought that was impressive. But I think the DEEP has ruled on that and I'll ask the, I don't know, anyone who can answer that question.
For the record, Emily Perko, ecologist and registered soil scientist with GEI Consultants. Yes, we did receive all of our approvals with the NDDB, Natural Diversity Database, through the Department of Environmental Energy and Protection. And bats is one of the items on that agenda.
So I think, I mean, one other question I would have is all these species that are obviously using this site. This commission has spent, you know, a lot of time in working with applicants to create large amounts of open space in this town. Much of it is treed, much of it similar to this site and none of it's identical, of course. So these species, can they, I mean, like bald eagles that are coming here and catching squirrels, there's still some area where they could do that, but would they be able to move to another location?
Uh, yeah, that's why we have, I had discussed that kind of in the last meeting, that habitat corridor. I believe it was about a hundred and forty feet on that eastern side and a little bit less on the southern side, an adequate pathway for those species to travel through.
But I mean, we recently approved housing development more up in the Barber Hill Road area on the north side of town where they set aside a huge amount of open space in order to get a consideration that they would have smaller housing lots, which reduced the cost of construction, but left the town a fair amount of open space. So this kind of movement of, you know, not just around the site, but other, you know, a couple of miles away or four or five miles away, is this something that has to be considered or was considered? The ability to, of the species to move themselves. Can a bald eagle fly to a different place, I guess?
Uh, yes, of course, it can fly to a different place.
All right, anyway, the DEEP has ruled on it, so it's kind of out of our jurisdiction at this point. I guess I would ask the intervenors who did bring up concerns that, you know, all the concerns with relationship, and thank you, I think I'm done with you. All the concerns that you have about wildlife, there really isn't anything we could do that wouldn't involve cutting down a lot of trees, is that correct? And I guess I would ask, who's, who's the intervener we last spoke to? Or do you have an attorney here for you? Okay, I mean, you're just...
Derek is one of the interveners.
Yeah. Derek's... There was a whole, but a whole amount of information in the intervener package about species. You know, different species. There was even a movie of bald eagles and very, very nice information.
So David Mills is at a night class tonight. He couldn't be here.
All right, well, in that case, the DEEP has already ruled on that. I mean, we do have a private owner here with a land in an industrial zone, so I don't think we wanna go down the path of making it impossible for this site to be developed. Whether this project is appropriate or works is another question, but I don't wanna go down the path of making this undevelopable. All right, I wanna now get to trucking. We had a paper on diesel particulate matter. I thought that was compelling. And it would add nearby residents added, excuse me, I'll add that nearby residents provided evidence related to truck noise. And the applicant provided a traffic report that addressed mainly the performance of intersections, but not the effect on noise. We did ask the applicant, last time I asked, for you to estimate the noise impact on neighboring properties of this operation, but that wasn't presented. So I'm wondering, I mean, you're basically saying you can't do anything about noise anyway because it's not covered by our ordinance. But I, I guess I'm not accepting that. But if you'd like to say, you know, do we have information on how much noise this thing is gonna create for our neighbors?
Thank you again. For the record, my name is James Connor, I'm an attorney for the applicant. We do not have a professionally engineered acoustical study that's specific to this site. What we have pointed out is that for a site plan approval in the industrial zone, there is no requirement for, for an acoustical study to be presented. And that the town does have a noise ordinance. It does specify a decibel level at the industrial residential boundary. And, you know, we will comply with that. And we're, you know, providing, you know, extra setbacks beyond the fifty-foot buffer in the regulations. And, you know, the determination that, you know, this commission made years ago to allow this use in this zone, knowing that the zone was next to a residential zone, you know, conclusively determines that it's, you know, that those, you know, that those provided buffers and setbacks, you know, should be sufficient to do that. If for some reason, there is a tenant who has either their own equipment or has a common carrier they're using that uses, you know, over-the-road vehicles that violate the, you know, US DOT or Connecticut Motor Vehicle Standards, there are enforcement tools to deal with those people. But we can't be assumed that there's going to be some worst case where this is going to be a magnet for lawbreakers. So that, again, getting back to your question, you know, we don't have, you know, something that does the very expensive computer simulation that would show at various receptor points the effects of all sorts of different, of all sorts of different sounds from this, from this site. But again, it's, it's not in your, it's not in your regulations. And, you know, we, you know, commit to observing both the DEP limits on sound emissions and on the Town of South Windsor ordinance with regard to time of day and noise levels.
Okay, so you did mention our noise ordinance and the preamble of the noise ordinance... Okay, so you did mention our noise ordinance, and the preamble of the noise ordinance documents on a factual basis where noise is actually harmful to people's health.
Mm-hmm.
Of all kinds of different reasons why noise is harmful to people's health. Then it goes in and establishes limits of noise at the boundaries with the residential land. And then it has exceptions. And one of the exceptions is that anything that's moving is exempt until they turn off their engine. Okay, once the truck turns off its engine, then it's subject to the noise ordinance. Unfortunately, from my experience, trucks make a fair amount of noise when, when the engine's running, but not a whole lot when their motor is off. Even the act of coupling, where, where the tractor part of the tractor trailer backs up to the trailer, the trailer slides onto the little ramp at the back, and then the thing drops, makes a loud banging noise. So even though you were not required to provide that kind of information, I'm concerned that we should be careful about approving a site plan that has a significant adverse health effect on the people of the community. So do you have, that's, can you bring up that slide I gave you? Is that possible or is that way too hard? There's a PowerPoint on there.
Chairman, can I just confirm that we're not going to go into our regular meeting? We may have people waiting.
Uh, I...
Do we, do we know?
I would confirm that.
Okay, thank you.
What slide are you referring to? I have it...
Yeah, great. If you would go to the second slide. So the interveners provided a report that was presented at the Transportation Research Board Hundred and First Annual Meeting, which I believe was in 2022, and they cited the number of decibels of different parts of the truck emit. And you can see that the engine, you know, for a truck going less than thirty-five miles an hour produces seventy-eight decibels, the exhaust eighty-five decibels, the air intake seventy-five decibels, the fan eighty-two decibels, and I'm thinking this truck in a parking lot is probably not going fast enough to create tire noise, so I put that as minus one, which is essentially zero. There's rules, algebraic rules that are kind of high school math, but for adding together all the decibels, you don't just add them up, you have to switch back and forth between logarithms and exponentials. But the combined effect of those decibels will come out to eighty-seven point five five decibels without the tire noise. Now, they do cite in that report that there are some trucks that have what are called straight pipe exhausts, or essentially there's no muffler. And since trucks are not subject to our noise ordinance, we actually have no way of preventing these kind of trucks from appearing from time to time, and they are there in a, in a small percentage of all the trucks. So assuming we're going to have trucks that are typical of the industry, there will be the occasional truck that I've listed up there as the worst case, and what happens there is the exhaust noise goes up to a hundred decibels, and because the other things are pretty much so small they don't count, the resulting total decibels is around a hundred. By the way, I can hand this out to, I should have handed this out to, one for the applicant and some for our members. Now, if you're looking at Governor's Highway, which I think, you know, again, by the law, as I understand it, we really can't look at what's happening on Governor's Highway in terms of noise, I, I don't think. I mean, I'd like to, but I don't think. If you've got the trucks moving on, on the highway, they're producing a little bit higher number of decibels. The one with the proper exhaust, about eighty-eight decibels, and the one with the, with the bad exhaust, still a hundred. Doesn't make much difference if you add in the tire noise from there. If you could go to the next slide. So I looked at 124 Edgewood, and this is a very crude calculation. I don't want to claim it's official, and I was hoping that the applicant would maybe have a little bit better idea, but basically the same report that was provided by the intervenor says that over soft surfaces, the door, the, the noise reduces by four-point-five decibels every time. The original measurements were at fifty feet, so if you go to a hundred feet, it's going to be four-point-five decibels lower. If you go to two-hundred feet, another four-point-five decibels lower, et cetera. So the resulting decibels at that house, if I don't allow for a barrier, and I didn't know, you know, I didn't include a barrier, but you do have a berm there, you might be putting up a barrier on the berm, resulting decibels from the noise in the parking lot is about seventy-four, seventy-five. And I'm trying to remember what the limit is. I thought I had it written down, but I don't. And eighty-seven from that worst-case truck that might come in every once in a while. But those are both higher than our limit. And of course, out on... That's at the house, at the property line, and it's, the distance is not as far, it's only two-hundred-and-sixty-eight feet, and at that distance, the noise goes up somewhat. And it ends up at seventy-six decibels and eighty-nine decibels for that worst-case truck. So 124 Edgewood, you know, again, I would invite the applicant to come in and tell us what's the proper way to treat that barrier, something simple to give us an idea of what's happening to 124 Edgewood. On the next slide, I did Cody Circle, ninety-five Cody Circle. I think you have to take credit for the building being in the way and being a barrier, and a barrier is worth about ten, ten decibels all by itself. It was just one of these fences that they put up along the highways, and this is a whole building. So I think that ninety-five Cody Circle, again, given that there's a berm out there also, is going to have a much lower noise and probably not actually getting the level of noise that's typical here. At the property line, it's a little bit higher, but then the people on Governor's Highway are going to suffer a lot from the noise, and unfortunately, I don't think we're allowed to consider that in, in, in even looking at a, at a site plan. So my question is, given the information we have about particulates, given the information we have about noise, are we allowed to evaluate, and I, and I guess I would ask the attorney and the applicant, are we allowed to evaluate whether a site plan adequately protects the public from the health impacts of that operation? And I'm not talking about unpleasant things, I'm talking about health impact, both of the particulates and of the noise that would be there coming off of their site in the parking lot. And I think you have an attorney.
Again, for the record, James Connor, attorney for the applicant. Mr. Wagner, under law relating to site plan applications as opposed to special exceptions, there is no provision made for a particularized determination about the health impacts of a permitted use being proposed on a site under, under a site plan approval. You know, the information that's been presented about the effects of having warehouses in your town, having diesel truck traffic in your town, is all, you know, very generic. It's the sort of thing that would be, you know, very useful perhaps in creating a, you know, new plan of conservation and development, to do long-term planning about where these uses should go. But those determinations have already been made by virtue of having a plan of conservation and development that makes this area industrial. These are uses, transportation going to and from sites is something that, you know, virtually all of the permitted industrial uses have in common. It's, it's not just, you know, a warehouse and distribution center that has truck traffic coming and going, so that, you know, there, there is, nothing, once a commission has made something, a, a, a site plan use in a particular zone that allows the commission to revisit, you know, whether that's a good idea, whether having an industrial zone next to a residential zone is a good idea because of potential health externalities, you know, either there or else.
Okay, let me, let me branch off of that then. However, the site plan tells us how they are going to erect various barriers, berms, and so on, so we could make a judgment that the barriers that they have included in the site plan are not adequate to protect the health of the public in that area. And that maybe, maybe we force them to unload the trucks indoors, for example, that would be a way of cutting down on the noise. They could design this site so it would not expose, would do a warehouse, a permitted use in that location, but not expose the public to the levels of noise that we, I think, can expect to see from the trucks that are operating there. Might be expensive, but they could design it to do that.
Well, if I could respond to that, Mr. Wagner, you know, under Section eight-three of the general statutes, it is only grounds to deny or modify a site plan application if it does not comply with the existing regulations. Now, if you were, you know, for example, to interpret your regulations so that we, you know, did need more, you know, interplanting in, in the buffer, which is something that Mr. DeMalle explained in his, his opening remarks this evening, that type of modification is certainly something that's allowed. But going to something that's, where the regulations say absolutely nothing, such as saying that truck loading and unloading must only take place inside buildings, you know, just isn't something that's contemplated by, by your regulations, it wouldn't be grounds to deny or modify the application.
But we could, we could make sure that the buffers that are provided, provide a healthier environment for our, our neighborings.
If it's within the language of your, of your regulations, then it is a subject matter that is covered by your regulations.
Is it covered by our regulations?
You, you have a buffer requirement that has to meet certain standards. It's a visual standard that you're typically measuring, but yes, you do have a, a buffer requirement.
Well, yeah, I know about that. I mean, it's fifty feet of vegetation, basically.
Correct. It has to meet certain standards at the five-year and then at maturity, and they provide you cross-sections demonstrating that. I think the question is whether or not, they've kind of demonstrated the next forty feet is where they're putting the berm and the landscaping treatments. If the commission feels that that doesn't adequately address the buffer in the first fifty feet, you could look for interplanting or fencing. Your regulation contemplates both those things.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay.
I guess I'd like to know, what is the queuing plan for this facility? I didn't see any queuing. We asked for information about queuing at the last meeting, didn't hear any new information
Our design is such that vehicles can get to and from our loading docks, to and from all of our parking spaces within the truck court area. We have a hundred and eleven of those, we have fifty-four loading docks. They're all designed for that to accommodate what we believe to be adequate level to accommodate the trucks will be coming in and out of this facility. It is an, it is an operational thing that the particular tenant will be covering. We also have, there are plenty of areas in between those parking areas for trailers, for example, we have on there, you could also store others, and there are driveways around there. So there is some additional surplus areas for do it in the event the loading docks and the trailer parking areas were insufficient for what they had coming in. But it's incumbent upon the tenant to make sure that they do not exceed their capacity. And we, and we, and this capacity is, we believe that this capacity is adequate for this particular building. So, you know, it's, it's, it's an operational thing, but we, we believe with that design, we can accommodate what's necessary for a building this size.
So we heard testimony that the way trucks really operate is they arrive, they have an appointment, they arrive, they have to park for a number of hours before their appointment comes up because it isn't when they arrived, and you're saying that they would be able to park in that parking lot and sit there, maybe even overnight, waiting for their appointment to come up to be loaded or unloaded? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we, we do not know which tenant will go in here, and they all operate differently. Some of them have assigned, you know, you come at this hour, at this minute, and you're going to be directed to, you know, loading dock number twenty-nine, for example, and some, some will have that kind of operational efficiency and others don't. But each one is different how they operate, and, and it depends on that, that particular tenant and how they do that. But they have their own methods for doing, operating that. We offered to make sure that they, they would not be off-site, that, that we could put up signage on Talbot Lane. We were offered that we're okay with prohibition on trucks, even queuing, parking, standing on Talbot Lane, for example, a, as, as a condition, or we're amenable to that and we'll do it. So we're agreeable to that because we think that our onsite is sufficient for most operations. If you have, if you have an operation that exceeds that, they have to correct their operational deficiencies. So they're, they're all different in how they do it, you know, not necessarily have to wait overnight and all that stuff, that there are many different ways that they operate.
So they would be, they would be expected, if they did want to operate that way, they would be expected to use the parking places? How many parking places do you have for trucks there?
We have for trucks, trailers, they're big enough for both. We have a hundred and eleven of those in addition to the fifty-four loading docks.
Okay. I guess that strikes me as probably adequate. So let's go on to idling. The idling, we have a three-minute idling limit in town.
Mm-hmm.
But someone who knows about trucks, and I think Derek, maybe you can answer me. So, you know, I'm a trucker and I come, I come up to a site and I realize I've got to wait, you know, an hour or a couple hours or overnight or whatever.
Sure.
Where am I gonna sleep?
Well, a lot of guys that have sleep, asleep in the cab.
Okay, so I'm gonna sleep in the cabin. How do I stay warm while I'm sleeping in the cabin?
It's hot in the summertime, you run it for air conditioning. If it's cold in wintertime, you run it for heat, right? That, that's one aspect of it. There's another aspect, right? So the, there is a pre-trip inspection that has to be done.
Mm-hmm.
That's mandated by the FMSCA, Federal Motor Carrier Safety Association, that says that any truck that's going to be used on a shift has to have a driver's vehicle inspection, very lengthy, they take on average twenty minutes to a half an hour. It involves checking brakes, lights, air pressure, lines, you name it, right?
It's kind of like the... It's kind of like the pilot kicking the tires of his airplane?
Exactly, right? So, happens every day, sometimes twice a day, depending on shift operations, right? But when this happens, the trucks are running because they have to monitor the air pressure at the same time. Make sure when they're pressing the brakes, pressing the brakes, they're not losing air pressure, right? So if you've got 20, 20, 25, 30 units a day that are gonna leave, that's 25 units that are running for a half an hour before the day starts.
Okay, so we really don't, I mean, the sign we're gonna put up with three-minute idling limit isn't really gonna accomplish anything.
Signs are up all over the place already. They mean absolutely, you know, they look good, but at the end of the day...
Do they sleep with the engine running? I don't know.
Depends on the, depends on the equipment. Some do, some don't.
Okay. If, and this is for the applicant, if we approve this as a distribution center, how would we know that it's actually turned into a freight terminal?
For the record, again, James Connor. Well, I think the simple answer to that is you have to trust your staff, and particularly the zoning enforcement officer, to know whether it has been turned into a use other than that which is contained in the site plan approval.
Okay, so give our zoning enforcement officers some advice on how to make that determination.
Well, under your regulations, it makes reference to several sources outside the regulations themselves or definitions, including some glossaries, or there's an illustrated dictionary of development terms that provides some guidance on what those elements are. But they can also look to some of the sources of the kinds that various people have cited, and including yourself, that are found, you know, in reference works in the industry that try to categorize various uses. But I think that the, to my way of thinking about these things, and again, we showed the pictures of truck terminals, and again, that they were cross-dock buildings, they're very narrow, not a lot of storage room, a lot of motion. But I think the main thing is that terminals are almost invariably operated by companies whose primary business is transportation, common carriers, not manufacturers, not wholesalers, not distributors, not retailers, by common carriers, transportation companies. And also, I think we should just note that on your table of uses, that where it lists truck and freight terminals, it does indicate that part of that approval brings along with it the ability to service vehicles onsite, which is something that does not exist with regard to a warehouse and distribution center. So I think that the, you know, certainly a bright line would be crossed if there was a tenant who started to set up, you know, a service facility, you know, inside the building that's only been approved as a warehouse and distribution center. Yeah, and incidentally, you know, as we showed in the slideshow and on the spreadsheet, this is not the first warehouse and distribution facility approved in the town of South Windsor as a warehouse and distribution facility. And it's not going to be the biggest. When it's done, it's not even going to be the biggest along Governor's Highway. Macy's facility is still bigger. So that, you know, clearly there's a pattern of what the town has done in the past, you know, other facilities that are located in the same zone. And incidentally, one of the things about creating zoning districts is that the owners of those districts are entitled to uniform application of the regulations to their buildings. I don't think that my client should be singled out as being different from a user like Macy's as to what the, you know, it's coming up with some standard in order to try to disqualify the use by transforming it into something it's not.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if one of the intervenors would like to comment on the same question, or the attorney for the other representative.
Yeah, it sounds to me like the issue that's before this commission, from the applicant's point of view, should be shifted off to the zoning enforcement officer. I mean, you have to decide what it is, and if you decide that it's a freight terminal, you've given that direction. I mean, I don't think it's a fair answer to say that's the zoning enforcement officer's issue. We have to decide in connection with this application, first of all, what this is. And it's our position that it is designed like a freight terminal, and it doesn't really matter what the application says because we have to go with how it's being used. And I think it's clear from that document that I submitted to you, the performance with the regulation, that you have it in the same category for this type of use, and because your term is not defined, I provided some definitions. Your definitions didn't seem too far off, and I think it's your decision to make that.
So, since it's really a question of the use, the use of a building can change. I mean, someone can live in a house and it's being used as a residence, and then they turn it into a doctor's office, and now it's being used as an office. So, I mean, the applicant has kind of said to us that, well, the use will be determined by the occupant of the building. Do we have enough information now to know that the use, the only use of this building is going to be as a freight terminal? And that they couldn't have a tenant come in and run it as what's really a distribution center?
Your regulation doesn't say the only use. Your regulation says a freight terminal. In our opinion, portions of this building are designed to be freight terminals because you have opposing docks that goes right from one to the other. There might be some short-term storage in the part that doesn't have it, but clearly freight terminal activity is happening in that building, and clearly the design is for that, they're not denying it.
Okay. I think those are all of my questions. Maybe I'll come back and ask some more if others don't ask them.
Okay, Commissioner LeBlanc.
Thank you. Yeah, a lot of good comments were brought up on the line here. Funny, I'm mixing them up as I'm hearing them, but I'm gonna have a few echoes of some sentiments that are up here. My biggest issue really is, and we just talked about it, is the use of the building. I'm seeing it as a mixed-use type of building. I'm seeing freight terminal, but I'm also seeing warehouse storages based on the size and capacity of that building. There must be room for storage inside there. However, as a commission, we have to decide how this goes forward, if it does, based on what the use of that building is. And looking at what happens outside that building too is a huge concern of mine. I know, Peter, you mentioned that tractor-trailers are exempt from state statutes and all that, but that doesn't really make me comfortable regarding noise and the things that happen with trucks. But Commissioner Wagner has decibels readings on tractor-trailers. That's provided that they're in good running condition, and there's always a few in every crowd that's not maintained well, then exceed decibels, that they're standard for that. And don't mind me, I've been up since quarter of four this morning, so it is getting late, so. Yeah, daylight savings isn't good tonight. So, anyway. Oh yeah, Peter, you mentioned earlier about trucks not idling out in the lot, and that's one of these things where, who's gonna enforce that? I mean, we have a 15 mile an hour speed limit posted where I work, and I would say nine out of 10 cars that enter that lot are 35 miles an hour. It's non-enforceable. I see that being pretty much the same.
Well, I know the South Windsor Police Department can enforce the town ordinance.
Well, really, idling of trucks inside the parking or the distribution area, if you will.
Yeah, it's governed by state law, so police could enforce that, DMV can enforce that. DEP Police, they have their own police division.
As long as comments they have, because it was mentioned about trucks not idling out there, but in my thought process, how are you gonna really enforce that?
Well, we believe it should be enforced, and it's a state law, and some entities are required to enforce those laws, just like, you know, other laws that we had in the state.
Right, understood.
So...
And I think my other biggest concern is, we have the video that was up here, and it's actually pretty well-done about trucks heading down the road. I'll say this, I live on the east side of town, and I've lived there since 1979 on the same road. I've seen more trucks in the last five years than I ever have living there. And I live really on the Vernon, East Windsor, Ellington, Tom Line, all right? So, what happens on the west side of town does impact the east side of town, so it is a concern of mine regardless. So, that said, there are signs posted on some of these roads that trucks are required or requested not to use this road, and I find that it's not all truck drivers. I'm not dismissing anyone here, but there's always a portion of them where trucks will find the path of least resistance, like water, electricity, and whatever's easier and economical is the route they're gonna take. So, the postings on these roads and idling restrictions, I mean, they're great ideas, but I don't think they necessarily work 100% of the time. It's a consideration that we need to judge regarding that. You look at the town of South Windsor as a whole, and you have these, there was a handout here, and there was some, you know, nice slides up on the screen, and you look at some of these warehouses or distribution centers or whatever they are. But they're in great areas. There's a lot of land around them, there's surrounding forests and fields, and houses seem far away. And some points are brought up, which were good. I'd been here long enough to have been down Governor's Highway back when it was split, and those are all tobacco properties, if I remember right. And much of that neighborhood has been there for a long time, as long as I've been in town. So, it's not the case where, all right, you had this industrial zone, and you built all these houses around it. That was once the neighborhood against farmland, and this time went on and changed, and now here we are today. So, looking at these slides and seeing these other similar properties where there's really not much around it, and there are probably great spots for those, like I think Home Depot was probably one of the best spots to have a warehouse like that or a distribution center. It's perfect for it. Had this project been a half-mile up the road, I don't think we'd all be here right now, all right? I really don't think that when everything was laid out years ago, that something like this would come across here or the intent of it. I took a ride down there, and it's a great piece of property, all right? It's flat, it's level, the trees aren't that old. From a constructability standpoint, it's a perfect place to build something like this. That said, is cost-effective? I get it, Peter, from your standpoint, whoever wants to, you know, build something here. I get the ease and the constructability of building something like this on this property. It's a tough spot. You know, here we are tonight, all discussing this, and where we go with it certainly is a huge concern. That's pretty much what I have. But I thank everyone for coming out. It's a long night, and everybody here had great comments. And thank you.
And make a response. First of all, right down the street in the same zone, we have a Macy's. You can have a Macy's, this site is smaller. It's a smaller building we're proposing. It's a big building, but a smaller building than Macy's. Similar use, distribution center use, just what, half-mile or so down the same street, same side of the street, that's allowed, has been allowed under the zoning, and is still allowed under zoning. This just happens to be a vacant parcel. Is it closer to residential? Yes, it is. It's one of the last ones we have. But it's allowed use in that zone, and just down the street, we have the same thing. Why can't you extrapolate to say, well, if you can do it down the street in the same zone, why can't you do it here? The regulations were not changed for that. The regulations allow this use. It's allowed by right, a distribution center use. You have approved lots of distribution centers in recent history that look similar to this, with a loading docks on one side or two sides, with lots of storage capability onsite, so you can handle a lot of volume inside the building, and then pick and choose, and then it goes out again. It's not similar to what you have approved, this commission, in years past mostly, freight terminals, where you have a skinny building generally, and you have loading docks on both sides typically, and you go from one truck to another one, and there's very little storage capacity, and you're not really a distribution center because you don't have the capacity for it for storage. This type of building with 360,000 square feet has lots of storage capability, and height-wise, it does as well. You can go rack after rack high. It's, you know, you're probably talking 32 feet high clear inside, and you got a 40-foot building, or thereabouts. So you can have a lot of racks and racking system that goes high, and you can store a lot of product in here. The trucking terminals we're referring to, that this commission has approved in the past, the R&amp;L, Old Dominion, whatever, they're not designed for that. The buildings are not like that, they're not big and wide, they're not huge capacity for storage. They're all very short-term storage, getting in one truck and out the other one, and it's on its way, in typically common carriers. This thing is designed for large volume, very large volume of storage, warehousing of product that gets, eventually gets shipped out. It may be, nowadays with e-commerce, it's faster and faster turnarounds. It's amazing what's happened because of what everyone in this room has been doing, most, for the most part. They order and they want deliveries one, two, three, four days, sometimes even the same day. It seems like that's possible, and they're saying it's possible. That's why we have a lot more trucks, a lot more facilities like this. It's e-commerce, and it's going that way. And that's why you see more trucks on every road around here that can accommodate trucks. And that's a fact, it's society...
No, it is, and I agree with you. It's happening all around the country. I mean, it's...
So, this, to say, conclude it, your regulations allow this use in the zone, it's allowed on this property in the zone, to say that we can't do that is, you're not uniformly applying, as Attorney Connor said, you're not uniformly applying your regulations. Why should we be treated differently? Yes, we're trying to reduce impacts, we've done extraordinary lengths, we've gone to extraordinary lengths, as I mentioned, to push the building farther away from the residences than you see in typical developments. And the buffers area we have for screening, the visual effect, as Michelle Lipe indicated, that's what buffers are for, it's for visual impact. We not only have a normal buffer, and we've agreed to even interplant the 50 feet above and beyond what's there now, and sometimes there's some, it's less vegetation than others, we'll interplant the hackout of that thing with evergreen trees and shrubs to meet your normal standard. If we didn't have any other expanded buffer, we have expanded the buffer to 90 to 95 feet in width, and other 40 to 45 foot wide earthen berm, 3,000 feet of it around this property. It's six feet high, and then we're planting on top of that. That alone will obscure to meet your standards at five years out and at maturity. That meets your standard. We think we've gone to great lengths to meet your requirements embodied within your regulations for straight site plan use such as a distribution center, and we think we should be... for straight site plan use such as a distribution center and we think we should be treated as a distribution center and not as some use that we, for which we have not applied. It's tough, I understand where you're coming from, we hear it, it's not an easy decision.
It's not, Peter, and no one up here said you couldn't do anything.
We couldn't do anything?
Right, no one up here said it can't do it.
Okay.
Understanding how I feel about the project and some of the things we looked at, certainly everything has changed in the industry and I get that.
If you didn't want the regulations to allow this type of thing, the regulations, and it's not, I'm not saying it's you, it's prior commissions, whatever, as this whole thing was evolving, maybe, maybe it could have happened, but the thing is, right now and when they bought the property, it's an allowed use by right in that zone and we have to live with what we have for regulations, we can't go by hypothetical future regulations.
And now sort of the legal part comes in and that's where somebody's answers, I mean, we have an attorney sitting right here, but again, the thing goes back to the beginning as far as what this place actually is, I'm scratching my head because I'm hearing different things with the application and was really looking at, these are the questions where really what is it? Because based on the regulations that I'm seeing, there are some subtle differences between them.
Most of the distributions, we've handled almost all those distribution center applications you've approved in the past in recent history, last fifteen years or whatever, and almost all of them weren't, we did not identify the tenant, almost everyone.
Right.
Home Depot was called like Project Hammer, you know, we didn't identify the tenant, we couldn't because we didn't have an execute contractor authorization to do that. So you weren't, for the most part, you were not aware of who the tenant was going to be. It was a distribution center use and they look at the traffic engineers come up with IT standards and all that, that's what we have to do. And they honestly do not have a tenant at this time, they don't, and they're not going out looking for one seriously until they know when they can deliver a building and we don't know when that is. We have too many hurdles, this one and then we have others, we have, by your rules and the WPCA rules, we have to return, we have to go to, after you, the next step is go to Water Pollution Control Authority for approval, we're not allowed to apply to them and go before them until after you've acted. So we will, but there are a lot of other steps involved and it's a long process.
Right, understood.
Commissioner Bernstein?
Yeah, in the interest of time, I'm just gonna go down one avenue and for that I So over the course of the public hearings, there have been a number of references to the fact that the traffic study was done outside of typical school time.
Correct.
And I went through this to try and identify the timing of this and the only thing I can find is on the cover, there's a reference to June, July and September.
Those are the dates of the revisions or the revisions of the study, not the date of the counts. If you look at existing conditions, we state when the traffic counts were done.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
If you look on the existing conditions section, we state specifically when the counts were done, when the traffic counts were done.
Do you know that off the top of your head, the to and from?
It's about June, it's between June sixth and June twenty-four, I can, if you give me a second, I can just look it up here.
While Maximo's looking for that, just one thought, someone suggested a third-party review of the traffic report. Well, the third-party review has been done, the traffic engineers, Connecticut Department of Transportation, Office of State Traffic, Highway Administration, or, oh, sorry, Office of State Traffic Administration, they've already reviewed it, the report, and they've agreed with their analysis, they approved that and they agreed with their findings of the report, so there's already been a third-party review and the state of Connecticut did it.
We don't specify the date, but we do specify that it was June twenty, twenty-one, but that's, it was, if I'm not mistaken, don't quote me on this, but it's June sixth, if I'm, if I, yeah, June sixth, it's the date that we collected the data, if I'm not mistaken.
All right, well, the reason I bring it up and, Peter, I hear what you're saying, but if the base information is incorrect, then the third party could be reacting to incorrect information and here's where I'm going with this.
So, and I can attest to that, that before doing the traffic study, we coordinate with that office and they approve our volumes. It's not something that is just, we collected and this is what we used, no, they have to approve the volumes that we use for our study. They not only reviewed our volumes, they adjusted the volumes as well for, to anticipate the carless, past us expansion as well.
Okay, so I'll just put out there what, you know, where I'm going with this because, so according to the South Windsor Board of Education website, the school year ended June seventeenth. To me, it makes a whole lot of difference whether this study was done while school was in progress or whether it wasn't for this reason. There's a DATCO facility down Nutmeg and I can tell you with certainty that between about six-thirty and eight-thirty in the morning and between about one-thirty and three-thirty in the afternoon, that bus depot floods school buses out onto Governor's.
Correct.
And they go towards Route Five in a lot of cases and you can do anything you want with the signaling, it doesn't matter because those buses are required by law to make a protocol stop at the train tracks.
Correct.
So I'm just wondering if this takes all that into consideration, it would make a big difference if you were to do a study in the summer versus, you know, in the dead of winter when they're school. And the second part is, although I appreciate your comment on your addendum, really doesn't look at this issue I'm bringing up, it looks, because you comment that there's five buses that travel Governor's and only one of them picks up and drops off kids, that's not the issue I'm getting, I'm getting at, what these buses coming out of DATCO do to traffic on Governor's and I just think that's a big issue, so essentially I'm asking for a point of view on whether this dynamic that I'm talking about is incorporated in here or not because if it isn't, I frankly would argue that this may not be totally valid.
So the way that a traffic study is done, when you look at the intersection capacity and the intersection analysis of itself of getting, what's the delay at each approach, like based on the signal timing that you have, correct? It's based on the total volumes and you specify the program of what's the percentage of heavy vehicles on the road depending on your data collection and I can tell you that we've been out there and we know that there is around fifteen buses that basically go in the peak morning and those fifteen buses will not affect our, basically our results, they will have minimal impacts to our results on the, on the traffic study.
So that, you're saying that that's what the third party corroborated?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Peter, this drawing that you showed us that you labeled Max One, is that the size of a building that could be on this site if every car and every truck parked inside the building? Yes or no?
The only purpose of that was to show you that what, half the site, because you allow fifty percent of the site to be a building, fifty percent, half the site to be a building, we showed what size that would be if it were at, built at sixty feet off the propping line.
Right.
That was the only purpose of that exercise.
That does not include impervious coverage.
Well, yeah, well, yeah, impervious coverage is at sixty-five percent and that's at fifty percent, the building coverage is fifty percent, so sixty-five percent is that, you can still get.
Right, but what I'm saying is realistically, you could not build a building this big and still expect to have the tractor-trailer parking and the vehicle parking to fit on the site.
We.
I just wanted to get that out.
No, yeah, well, the thing is, is we have a smaller building, one reason we have a smaller building is because we want to accommodate all the parking required under zoning and we want to accommodate enough trailer parking and all this stuff, so it's a smaller.
They are, they are requirements, okay, that's, that's all for that.
A different use could have, it doesn't need that much trailer parking, doesn't need that much loading docks, doesn't need that much employee parking, could be bigger than what we have.
Yeah.
In your zone.
Thank you. Trees, we have a map here or a plan that has all these identified trees, how many of these trees in the buffer zone are we gonna be saving?
Only, only those which are basically, for the most part, along the fifty-foot buffer strip.
Which you have two of those fifty-foot buffer strips, correct?
We have, we have the buffer strips along the entire southerly property line and along the tire easterly property line, we also have area in the northeast corner which is a wetland area that we're avoiding, which is larger.
So I'm expecting we'll more than likely be able to tag all those trees if approved and save them?
Within the fifty-foot buffer? Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and those only represent that which, under your zoning regulations are required to do, those are the big ones, eighteen inches and larger.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
All the other trees we didn't have to locate.
Yep.
Thank goodness.
Okay, I just wanted to put that on the record. I had asked about crossbars, if there were gonna be any crossbars on-site to remove snow and that, I'm just curious.
That's a tenant, that's a tenant decision on that and we're not anticipating it this time.
Okay. Traffic report, one of the residents had testimony that there were a lot of inconsistencies with the traffic report and one that I noticed was the Governor's Highway speed was thirty miles an hour and that is correct in front of the site on Governor's Highway, but immediately off the site, it switches to twenty-five miles per hour east of this site. And I do have a picture of the reduced sign, a reduced speed sign twenty-five miles an hour ahead and it's posted in the same picture as your displays for your public fourteen-day notice, okay? So I'm just making you aware.
So thirty that goes down to twenty-five, yeah?
Correct.
Yeah.
As soon as you leave the site.
Okay.
Light poles. You're asking for a waiver and I understand what you're saying, I still don't feel comfortable with the southwestern light pole, there's one that's closer to the residence than the other ones, I think that one should still be twenty-five foot height and the other twelve, I think, could be to thirty-five foot height.
Ben Wheeler, for the record, we are amenable to that, to reducing the closest pole down to twenty-five feet that we've requested the waiver for, however, until we've done the four metric study, I just wanna put on the record that because of that, as we testified before with the higher light poles, that allows us to reduce the total number, so if we do reduce that one to twenty-five feet, it may mean another pole in that area.
Yep, okay, thank you. I think it's important the applicant show a truck traffic pattern for the site as far as queuing. I can't remember us ever approving an application for a warehouse without this. I also feel when you come into the site, to the left or to the north, let me get my, you have the ability for the tractor-trailer to go around the islands and turn around, but when you come into the site and you go right, if the truck driver goes too far, there's no traffic circle for turning around on that south side and that would tend to lead to them if they pull down there or even pull as far as your gate wanting to pull around the building and that's something that the applicant should discourage as much as possible. These gates, now you've got a gate at the front entrance and I know it's gonna be a tenant decision of how that gate is accessed, whether it's a code, whether you have a guard shack, those are all, I believe, tenant-driven issues, but those issues also affect the queuing for this site. Is the applicant willing to do a traffic turnaround on that south aisle, demonstrate how a trailer truck is gonna back around there? Either that or I would suggest that there's two spaces that are always left open so a tractor-trailer can back into it.
Ben Wheeler, again, for the record, we agree with your last comment there that basically the last two trailer spaces would be striped out, so they would not be parking spaces and allow for a tractor-trailer to back into there and effectively turn around.
So what you're, what I believe you're saying is then a tractor-trailer would possibly pull down to that gate that you have there and then back into those two spaces?
Either, either way, either pull into that, those spaces and turn, you know, back out to make the turnaround or pull up to the gate and back in, whatever's easiest for them.
As I said at previous meetings, I believe the signs to control the tractor-trailers should all be internal. If you do the signage right and the gates right, there should be no reason to put a sign out on Governor's Highway telling tractor-trailers that all tractor-trailers must go left. That can be accomplished by doing that on-site and not permitting them to go down that back area or to go down to the east on that access road.
And I believe our latest site plan submission does take your comment into consideration and show those signs at those emergency access gates.
Yeah, okay. On, let me just get this out of the way. Right now, from what I see, you have the fifty-foot buffer and then you have your berm outside of the fifty-foot buffer and I believe your berm is part of the vegetation that you're saying, I saw on here, you said the buffer is ninety feet, okay? Can you just confirm that?
Yes, it's, we have a fifty-foot buffer along the, along the property line, south side and east side.
Yeah.
Where we're retaining the existing vegetation and we've agreed, if you, in your discretion, agree with us to do that, to interplant with evergreen trees and shrubs. So, and then beyond that, we have forty to forty-five feet, depending where you're measuring, we have an earthen berm implanted on top of that or evergreen trees.
Okay, my, my question to you is, it's twofold, how do we protect that being as it's not in the buffer, would the applicant be willing to do a forty-foot conservation easement to protect that?
Let me, we've talked about this, hold on.
Yep, go ahead. Yep, go ahead.
We anticipate some kind of question like that. We, we are agreeable to taking the entire 50-foot strip and the 40 to 45 feet, it varies, depending where you're measuring, additional strip which contains that, that earthen berm, as well as the trees on top. That'll, in and of itself, meet your regulations, the berm with the trees on top, by the way, over time, for obscuring the view, as, per your regulations. But we'll do both, and we'll put a buffer slash conservation easement over the entire thing. And that is so that it will be main, but we have to have the ability, it won't, won't be that typical conservation thing where you're not allowed to touch a tree or a branch or whatever. This is so that we can maintain it for the purpose, intended purpose, which is not only for wildlife, and habitat and corridor and stuff, but it's also for obscuring the view, the screening effect as a buffer effect. So, so in other words, if a tree dies, we have the ability to go in there and replace it. Where some conservation easements don't allow that. And if we otherwise need to maintain it, we can also mow, I think it's once a year, we can mow the berm. They, they want the earthen berm only mowed once a year, they said. That's even in the, in our regula, our approval with weapons.
I, I thought that was the, the wetlands area, not the earthen berm.
Oh, 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 okay. Oh, oh, that's, excuse me, I stand corrected, yeah, on the west side, that, that is correct. But, we, we need to maintain that area anyways, there'll be some mowing or whatever, there'll be, maybe you want to take out some invasive species sometimes, you know, take care of some trees, if there's a tree falling, you know, you might want to take it out for safety reasons. So we want the ability to maintain it properly, so it's not just a pure conservation, it's a buffer slash conservation, but it'll be worked out between the town attorney and our counsel, Mr. Connor, and his firm, in terms of how we maintain it. So we can at least maintain it so it functions in perpetuity.
Okay.
That's what we're talking about.
Michelle, do you have any concerns about that avenue?
No, as long as we have something that protects it, and so that we have some enforcement measure in the future if it were needed.
And, yes, and it would be enforceable, agreed, by the town.
One of the concerns I have with noise and minimizing it, you've got all these additional trailers, 54 docks or whatever, on the west side, and with real, no real barrier, no physical barrier, between those docks and the residence. And I understand, you know, one of those lots is town open space. But I would like to see some type of wall, whether it's like a retaining-type wall, or a wall further out, I think a retaining wall next to that last truck bay would be the best way to buffer some of that noise.
My clients would like to hear, we'd like to hear anything else you'd like us to change before we answer that, if we may? If there are other things you'd like us to change, additional things you'd like us to add to the plan? Is there, if there is anything else we'd like to, before we respond to that?
Okay, then, let me put a note that I'm going to come back to that.
We'd appreciate that, because we want to know the magnitude of what you're, you may be.
Yeah.
Suggesting.
Okay.
We have a commissioner here, I guess he's here for the first night, that's. I had an engineer once that started for me, first ti, first hearing she went to was in Enfield, and it went till almost 2:30 in the morning.
We are unfortunately going to have to wrap up pretty soon, because we do have a policy of getting out at 11:30, so we're going to have to try to wrap up as quick as we can.
Okay.
Thank you.
I believe that might be all I have at this time.
Okay.
Sure. Michelle, we went till 1 o'clock one time for Evergreen Walk.
That's the old days. No, I, we've actually, in the last couple of years, 11:30 is supposed to be the, I think our maintenance crew leaves towards that.
Okay.
But, we're all here in safety and numbers.
We are amenable, we're agreeable to, at the end of our loading docks, the length of the loading dock, correct? Which is 60? Yeah, 60 feet, so in other words, our southerly spot, to do a 12-foot wooden wall across there, which is what they typically use for acoustic barriers, that type of thing. So a wooden wall is 12 feet high, remember it's recessed there? Correct, isn't it? Yeah, it's recessed there at the loading dock. But anyways, on, on, on the earthen area next to it, we'll do a 12-foot wall next to it. Wooden wall, which is what they use for acoustics. All the way across that loading dock is southerly end. In addition to what we're doing, remember, we are, we're doing the earthen berm and the plantings and all that other stuff, too. So we are amenable to that at the end, as per your suggestion. This is what we're coming back with. We'll do a, a wall that's 60 feet, right? So, do you want to go up?
Yeah, I'm, I'm getting what you're putting down.
Basically.
Right.
Yeah.
All the way across.
Right.
Commissioners, is there, go ahead, Commissioner Wagner.
So, first of all, I meant to give a copy of this to the applicant and to, but I mean, I can give them.
Oh, that we saw in the screen.
I have more copies if they want. Second of all, this is a very crude and a.
You said that.
And it's inaccurate, okay?
And it's inaccurate?
I mean, of course it's inaccurate, because it doesn't have, it doesn't have all of the things. What I would, what it is, though, is just a simple straight-line addition of, you know, or actually multiplication of barrier effects, okay? What I'd like you to do is demonstrate to us that, and I'm not asking for a three-dimensional acoustic model, but just looking at all the, you know, your, your berm, your trees, talk to an acoustic engineer, tell us that you've got enough stuff there that the people at 124 Edgewood are going to have noises that are within, you know, the limits when these trucks are operating. Same thing with Cody Circle, I'd, I'd say, what's the house there that was closest? 95, you know? I think you've got, you probably have enough barrier and other things between that corner parking space, that southwest parking, you know, truck bay and the house, that you may have, you know, got there. Otherwise, maybe I'll, I'd like to see a little improvement of the, of the barriers you have, but.
Yeah, well, we're, I mean, from the loading dock, I mean, we're going out 60 feet, 12 feet high with a wooden barrier. So that's going to help a lot.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Tell me the, I mean, these things, it's well-known that these wooden barriers, they don't eliminate all the noise, they, they reduce it by a fraction, so.
Yeah.
The berms and so on. I'd just like to know what the people at 124 are going to experience, and they're kind of representative of that neighborhood, with all your buffers, and just convince me that you, you know, we have a buffer that's adequate to protect their health.
Okay, I have one more thing, and then I'll be done. The fifth bullet on page five of the Goman York analysis, and I want to read it. Industrial space, especially warehouse and distribution spaces, experiencing considerable growth and robust demand. This is, in part, the result of Connecticut's location between New York and Boston markets. Continued increases in e-commerce and changing needs and requirements for modern warehouse and distribution space. The great Hartford market is well-positioned to benefit from this renewed demand in industrial space, and has benefited from this renewed demand. And my point of reading that is, and we've had testimony tonight about tax abatements, and I think this bullet should be good consideration, or a great argument, that the tax abatements on any remaining industrial property might just be a waste of taxpayers' money. This analysis basically gives me the impression that they're coming anyway, regardless of tax abatements.
If I may, Chairman, just don't interpret demand as level of rent. The, the biggest challenge from financial feasibility standpoint in Connecticut is that we are a high-cost state, high construction costs and so forth. But ultimately, you end up with a scenario where rents are modest, and therefore, the return on investment is challenging. So, I understand, yeah. Demand on industrial space is the best it's been in years, but we've only seen very marginal increases in the per-square-foot rents. So there are many industrial facilities out there throughout the region, not just here in South Windsor, that have received tax abatements. So, I, I'm, I'm not saying you need to do a tax abater or whatever, I just don't want you to confuse demand and financial feasibility, because they are two different things. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, is there a reason to keep the public hearing open, or staff, or, oh?
No, but I do have a couple of letters that, I'm not sure if they were read or not, because we had so many come in last minute, so they will be included in all the packets, and if they're duplicate, but they're letters similar to what was read previously.
And at this point, given the late hour, and I'm thinking the applicant's lawyer wanted an opportunity to rebut anything that was said, and the lawyer representing the neighbors has, I don't think we can go any longer tonight, so I, we're going to have to keep it open for.
We can squeeze it in, how many minutes? Four, five minutes? Four or five minutes, be done?
I think you're four or five minutes, and he's four or five minutes, and the late hour of the night, I've, I think pushed it way past what's expected of these commissioners, and I appreciate all the commissioners, all the residents who've stayed out this late. But I, I think it, we need to draw the line.
Yeah, and so, and then the question is, do you want to keep it wide open, or do you want to just, have it specifically come down to a couple of things? In his closing remarks, rebuttal closing remarks, and, oh, I'm sorry.
Are you out?
And I had some information I requested from you.
Yes, yes, in that item.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, that's.
And, and that's what the hearing is extended for.
Yes.
That way, we don't keep going and going and going and going.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So.
What date do we, you know, we have a drop date, date of December 7th on this application. We have a public hearing next week that we've already advertised for, so we would not be able to place it on. You do not have a meeting on the 23rd, that is your off week. We do have a meeting on the 30th, so it's, we could continue to the 23rd to just finish up the public hearing, and it's up to you.
I would say we should meet on the 23rd and try to finish this out.
Specifically?
Okay. Just because of the time constraints, we have 35 days to make a decision after wetlands.
That's correct.
So, and we have a lot of other agenda items that we have to move forward also.
Okay, so we're continuing that to the 23rd?
Okay.
Just so you know, I will not be there.
It's, it's not the acceptable form anymore.
The 30th is a regular meeting, the 23rd was an off week because of the holiday. The regular meetings were the, tonight and the 30th.
Okay, so at this time, I'll ask for a motion to continue the public hearing to the 23rd, a special call meeting for the 23rd. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we continue the public hearing to November 23rd.
With the intent to, as stated previously, that we're going to get the closing arguments from both lawyers, any information that was requested, such as what Steve had, and what else?
I believe that was it, other than information requested the applicant to look at.
Okay.
Yes, what you said.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Okay, we are adjourned here.